All right, I unmuted.
Okay, we're muted?
He just unmuted us. We have to wait about 10 seconds, 15 seconds.
Okay.
We're unmuted.
I have a little bit of my audio.
We're unmuted, folks.
So let's say, let's do a sound check.
Let's do a sound check, everybody. Here's a sound check for you. Brad, how's it sound?
I unmuted it. We're good to go.
Okay, we're good to go on your end, guys?
You're good, buddy. Just unmuted us.
Okay. All right. All right, Mark, you're ready? You're ready with? We're ready when you are, Mark. We're unmuted, folks.
Fire away.
Indeed, indeed, agenda.
So let's say, let's do a sound check.
Let's do a sound check, everybody. Here's a sound check for you. Brad, how's it sound?
I unmuted it. We're good to go.
We're good to go on your end, guys? Hold on, Mark. Okay. All right. All right, Mark. Tell me when you're ready. We're ready when you are, Mark. Fred, let me know.
Yep, we're good to go.
We're live? Thank you. Mark, we're live. You're set.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our committee of the whole meeting for July 27, 2020. We are again coming to you virtually this evening. We would much rather prefer to be with you in person, but given the executive orders, we're limited to the number of people that we can have in one particular area. And we wanted to make sure that we met, at least got to as many folks as we could through this meeting. So virtually was our best option. Hopefully, we'll be back quickly in the near future with actual in-person meetings. But we're going to do our best. So if you tuned in to watch discussion on many of our items, this is the meeting that you want to watch because this is the one where we get a little more in-depth to the items that will eventually come before the board for a vote. We have a number of items on our agenda tonight, and our first item is audience communication. And I understand, Mrs. Jenkins, that we have quite a few items tonight. And the way we're going to do this is Mrs. Jenkins will read the items that have been submitted to her. So, Mrs. Jenkins, I'll turn it over to you. You're muted. You're muted.
There we go. Sorry about that. Thank you, President Johnson. We do have 28 comments that have been submitted through our Google form. So I will start with, I did notice that a few people have submitted multiple questions. So you might hear a repeat of a name here and there. Okay, the first comment is from Erin Piper of Livonia. And Erin writes, "Thank you for your work. I'm sure that this has been a major challenge. Can you speak to teacher support or concerns of in-person plans outlined tonight? Does LPS anticipate being able to move teachers with high-risk or high-risk family members to an online format?" Okay. Next, we have a comment from Linda Stoneye of Livonia. Linda writes, "Please do not keep kids out of school any longer or come up with some strange schedule that will confuse everyone and put more stress on parents to either take time off work or pay for childcare." Next, we have Danielle Holland. "Students need to eat lunch if the school day is over four hours long, yet the virus does not disappear when children eat. How do you plan on keeping our students safe during lunchtime and kids are eating and chatting? Will you be installing plastic partitions?" Another comment from Danielle Holland. "What is the plan when a student or a family member of a student tests positive? Who is quarantined? Does the school or class get shut down? Do the siblings need to be quarantined?" A comment from Sarah Garchar. "Will the online classes be taught by teachers from your home school? Meaning, if my child goes to Rosedale, will they be in an online class with other Rosedale students and teachers, or will it be district-wide?" Next comment from Leslie Mason. "What aspects of the plan are firm for Nigie Euro? What aspects of the plan are still in flux for Nigie Euro?" Another comment from Danielle Holland. Oh, actually, this one, she had filled in, this next question is meant not to be read aloud, but just for the board. So we'll be sure to pass that comment along. Another comment from Sarah Garchar. "Will Mecan courses be available if we choose all virtual learning?" Another comment from Danielle Holland. "My children go to..." Where does Webster fit within the online curriculum? Comment from Graham Parr. "The My Safe Start Plan says to check school ventilation and HVAC. Have those checks been performed? Are requirements for outdoor air and ventilation in building codes and other standards being met in LPS? Is ventilation being increased for the COVID return?" Next comment is from Mike Testa. "Good evening. First, I would like to thank everyone involved with the Return to Learn Task Force. This is very important work that impacts all of us. I look forward to this item being reviewed and discussed in detail tonight. I expect that this meeting is being watched by more people than usual, likely a lot more. Because of this, I would like to take this opportunity to suggest to the community members watching to continue following these meetings in the future. This is the forum where the major decisions for LPS are discussed and decided. The business conducted here is very important and directly impacts the educational experience of our children. Stay involved and stay informed." Next comment from Nick Sommer. "What will be the process if and when a teacher or student has been confirmed to be carrying COVID-19? With all students in the class, will all students in the class need to quarantine at home? If so, during that time, will online classes be available, which directly picks up where in-person class left off?" Next comment is from Jennifer. "If children return to school, do they have to wear a mask? I will not be sending my child to school in a mask." Next comment is from Samantha Baker. "With districts like Ann Arbor and Lansing opting for full online due to the number of cases that are rising again, how do you, in good faith, look at those same numbers and believe it is safe to send our students and teachers back in the physical space? To add on, Wayne County has doubled the cases for 100,000 than Washtenaw has." Next comment, another from Nick Sommer. "Will a parent be able to opt-in or out of online classes for our children mid-marking period? At end of marking periods or at end of marking periods generally, will LPS be flexible with the style of enrollment due to the ever-changing conditions surrounding COVID's spread?" Next comment from Amanda Enriquez. "Could you please provide a step-by-step plan for how a positive case will be handled at each school, inclusive of all scenarios? At what point will classrooms go virtual and at what point will the whole school go virtual? For example, if Kid A in Classroom A tests positive, what will happen to the rest of the kids in Classroom A? What is Kid A, what if Kid A has a sibling in Classroom B? What will happen to all of the kids in Classroom B?" Next comment from Jekyllin Weldon. "Can you please detail the positive changes you expect to be implemented in executing IEP plans in the case of virtual learning this fall versus how they were executed virtually in the spring, i.e. occupational therapy and et cetera?" Next comment is from Tiffany Jerity. I hope I'm pronouncing these names correctly. "Please consider all of the children who require special education. My child has really fallen behind in all of the subjects. She currently will be in sixth grade at Johnson Upper Elementary." Next comment is from Nicole Baumann. "Will both Japanese class categories, Nihongo and Kukugo, be offered online for Nigiyuro students who are participating in the LPS online program this year?" Next comment is from Renee Parr. "Can you describe how you are checking to make sure that it's a safe environment without COVID-infectious staff and students? Will testing be performed? Temperatures aren't perfect. Will COVID testing be provided? How will you know that parents are checking their children at home? And what kind of student screening will the school do? I see in the My Safe Start Plan for schools that staff and students are recommended to check themselves, but we are not doctors." Next comment is from Leah Shepherdinas. "Will online instruction be live instruction with a certified teacher or pre-recorded video or a mix of both? How much autonomy is expected of younger K through six children in the online instruction plan? When will parents have the opportunity to review the online platform and procedures? And how much time will there be between the parent tour of the online system and the system launch when school starts?" Next comment is from Julie Monroe. "Would staggered start back to..." What, I'm sorry, would a staggered start back to the school year be anything the district would think about? This would enable teachers to properly, more effectively introduce students to new rules and procedures. It could be something like half-days for the first week or two weeks. The morning session with half the class, then the afternoon session would be the other half of the class. It would also give teachers an opportunity to make any changes based on how it is going with half the class versus the whole class. Other districts are doing this, and it seems like a great idea to really get the kids on board and understand the proper procedures. The smaller the class, the easier it is to control the situation in the classroom. I know it would be difficult for the parents to deal with, but this is not a normal circumstance. And if parents want to keep the school open as long as they can, they need to find a way to make it happen." Next comment is from Sarah Weir. "Thanks for your hard work to put this plan together. I know it is a hard task. Have you talked with any, have you talked with the governor's office regarding the possibility of moving the state back to Stage 3? And if so, has that influenced your plans to start or not start all virtually? I think the worst thing to do would be to go to all the trouble to get in the buildings and then have to shift to all virtual early in the year." Next comment is from Madeline Acosta. "Greetings, Livonia School Board members and community at large. My name is Madeline Acosta, and I am a candidate for the trustee position on the Livonia School Board. As a former special education teacher, a parent of a seventh and ninth grader, a current LPS substitute teacher and PTA president, I look forward to my continued service to this community at the school board level. Respecting the current executive order, I will be available to chat virtually or via email." And then she lists her email at acostaforlps@gmail.com. My website will go live on Wednesday at acostaforlps.com. Feel free to reach out to me to find out... Yeah, normally, I'm not sure if this comment is actually appropriate campaigning on this forum, but I'll finish with the last sentence is, "Feel free to reach out to me to find out more about how I am a great fit for the trustee position." Next comment is from Dominique Harvey. "Will the students' temperatures be taken before entering the school, also during the day?" Next comment is from Corey Hicks. "Many of my fellow friends and family within the state and others have taken precautionary measures to refrain from having staff and students from attending in-service classroom participation. They have chosen to have online services at least until January. Is this something you are interested in considering as an option?" Next comment is from First Initial D as in David, last name Locke. "Once a student, teacher, counselor, or any other child or adult in the building becomes symptomatic or has a positive test, what will be the protocol for isolating the classrooms involved, tracing and notifying students and staff who were in contact, et cetera? Who pays for the testing if exposed individuals have no insurance? How many degrees away from the index case will notification occur? Just the families at home, coworkers of parents of an exposed child? What will you do about schoolyard bullies who take their masks off and cough on other students? What will the school, what will school buildings have, or will the school buildings have a dedicated sick room where students who either fail entry screening measures in the morning or become symptomatic during the day can wait for a parent or guardian to pick them up to minimize the exposure to others? Will there be a separate waiting room for children who need to leave early because of a physical injury or non-contagious issue? There will be, there are many possible scenarios where the precautions will fail. Many local districts have already announced they will begin this year completely online." And the final submitted comment is from Deborah Davidson. "I am a parent at Nigiyuro with a third grader and sixth grader attending this year. I would like to express my wish to have a virtual option that supports the Japanese language program. Both my children are non-native speakers with no other option to learn Japanese other than attending Nigiyuro. We are not fully comfortable sending our children into school at this time, and if the Japanese program is not available, there is a possibility that we would take our children out of school. Please consider providing this option as you make decisions about reopening school. Thank you." And that wraps up our communications.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins. And thank you to all who submitted comments tonight. Hopefully, if you stay tuned, some of your questions may be answered. We'll then move on to Item 2, our Committee of the Whole. And we have two items. The first item is the LPS Return to Learn Task Force, and our presenter is our Superintendent, Mrs. Oakquist. Good evening.
Thank you so much, President Johnson, and to all of our board, our cabinet colleagues, and all of the guests with us this evening. This evening, we're bringing to the board an extensive recommendation regarding the return to learn for our over 14,000 Livonia Public Schools students and almost 2,000 staff. As you know, in the past four and a half months, the pandemic has required us to really significantly rethink our delivery of instruction and how we could provide support to our students this past spring. And it has certainly required us to think carefully and deeply about how to best meet the needs of our students and our LPS staff about whom we care greatly as we begin this new school year. I would agree with you that many of the questions, hopefully, we will be able to answer this evening that were asked prior to our meeting beginning. And also, I do want to make a mention, and I know that you'll hear this again, that from these questions and others that come to us, we will create a very detailed FAQ that will be continuously updated throughout the next several weeks to answer these questions as well. So I believe I can say that there is not an educator, a staff member, a student, or a parent who doesn't long for some sense of normalcy, however that may be described as it relates to the coming school year. We heard that over and over again in our survey feedback that was shared with us, and we know our students, for the most part, are eager to be back in school and connecting and engaging with each other, connecting and engaging and learning with their teachers and their coaches and their mentors and participating in those activities which bring them joy. We also know that juxtaposed with that desire is some concern or fear or trepidation that is also being felt by the unknowns of a return to school and what that means for each individual personally. So certainly, we understand that that ranges along a continuum. And our goal has been and continues to be how we can make that return to learn safely and effectively. So in May, we began the planning process for our return to school, even though teaching and learning were still continuing for the final weeks of the 1920 school year. And at the start of June, our task force began its work. And over the past eight weeks, our teams have talked and toiled and read and researched, wrote recommendations, and really discussed many, many details related to, again, a safe and effective return to school. The commitment and the dedication of so many was evident. And I know we certainly heard a number of our community members share that thanks in their comments this evening. And I really just want to take a moment and sincerely thank each and every individual that has served on a subgroup task force on our steering committee, shared their time, their ideas, their opinions, their feedback. We also had the opportunity to hear from over 7,000 members of our community via the staff surveys that were sent. Thousands of individual comments were submitted, and each and every one of those were read. They were themed, and they were carefully considered so that we could take that input in as we created this plan. So for our community members, our staff, and our parents who joined us this evening, we are so thankful that you've taken the time to be with us tonight. While we will certainly share this presentation out via email tomorrow, we hope that by watching the presentation this evening, that will give you some insight into the thinking and the intent behind what is being recommended. And we want to assure you that great care and commitment has gone into each element. And we know that there will undoubtedly be questions, ideas, concerns that are raised, and that is certainly understandable as well. So I invite you to remain open in your thinking at this time. Take time to reflect upon the information we're going to share. And please know that you will have opportunities for feedback and opportunity to ask questions and to share your thoughts in the coming days. We truly do believe that we are in this together, and that is how we will do this in the very best way that we can. So tonight, we bring to you a recommendation for your consideration. It is our very best thinking at this moment in time, and it aligns with the Michigan Safe Start roadmap and the guidelines contained within. So we are going to go ahead and get started. You'll hear from a number of different members of our cabinet team this morning who led a number of the subgroups as part of the task force. So I will ask them, as we transition and take different slides to cover, that the first time that they speak, that they introduce themselves and the role that they serve in our community. So, Allison, you have it up on our screen for us. And so the first few slides are going to look relatively familiar, I know, to our board, to anyone who's served on one of our task force teams, and to anyone who watched the video that we sent out earlier in June. But I just want to take a quick look back at the process that we've utilized. So we're going to head to the next slide. And we're going to hop back just one. Thank you. Our Return to Learn Task Force Steering Committee included 20 individuals that represented the voice of each of our staff groups, parents, and our district leadership. Then we had task force subgroups, which I'll share in just a moment, which included over 210 LPS staff members and parents. The task force subgroups were really asked to research and develop and provide recommendations to the Task Force Steering Committee for a range of potential reentry scenarios so that we could safely, effectively, and successfully meet the needs of both our staff and our students. So you may recall, these were really the scenarios that we were asked to start with. These were the possible return-to-learn scenarios as we awaited that state guidance that we knew would come sometime during the summer months. But we knew we had to get started, and so we really asked our team to begin taking a look at three possible scenarios. A full-open, a new normal in our school, so a return to school but with enhanced safety protocols in place. A partially-open, where we may consider a hybrid plan of a partial online and partial in-person program. And then a third, if school buildings were not allowed to be open dependent upon the phase that we were in, in our region and in our state. So a brief note about our task force subgroups. You'll see on the right-hand side of the slide the different stakeholder groups that were represented, our Board of Education, each of our LPS staff groups, parents, school department and program representation from across our entire district, union leadership, our administrative leadership team, and our cabinet members. So we were so grateful to have the voices of many. We had 52 current and 24 past LPS parents, 99 teachers, and over 35 support staff. So again, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide. This was part of the original information that we shared with you. But this just gives you a snapshot of the Academics Subcommittee, which were actually four different subgroups representing 83 members that took a look at remote learning, elementary in-person learning, secondary in-person learning, and instructional or electives courses. We then had our Business Office, HR, and Support Services team that took a look at a wide range from food and nutrition services to transportation to instructional technology and more. We then had our co-curricular and after-school activities. So in addition to what happens during the school day, we know there are many important activities, an important part of our students' life that take place before and after school. So we had a team taking a look at those elements. Next, we had a Health, Safety, and General Operations. We had 34 members taking a look at things like cleaning protocols, what to do with sick staff and students, social distancing protocols, and communications and public relations. We also had a very detailed Special Education Committee. There were 35 members on that team, and they took a look at a wide range of items. And I know Dr. Terrell will share those with us a little later in the presentation that looked at the needs of our students with IEPs, how to deliver that instruction, the impact of COVID-19, as well as the impact of cross-district programming and transportation, as well as the social, emotional needs of our students and our staff. And again, this is something we've shared a few times. We are on track on our Return to Learn Task Force timeline. So we have snaked on, boy, it didn't seem that long ago that we were at the top of this timeline, and now we've already made our way through. And, boy, have there been lots of voices and lots of conversations and a ton of Zoom meetings in which we have discussed many of these different elements that we just covered. And so we're in that last band of the July 27 to August 3, where we talked about presenting the recommendations to our board, sharing it with all of our stakeholders, and then going through that final process of gathering feedback prior to the board voting on the recommendation next Monday. I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Terrell.
Thank you, Superintendent Oakquist. My name is Jennifer Terrell, and I am the Director of Student Services. I am responsible for all students with special needs in our district as well as the health needs for all students district-wide. As Superintendent spoke earlier about the range of potential reentry scenarios the task force were charged with starting at the beginning of June, the Return to Learn Plan was released by the state on June 30. So our task force teams then pivoted their work to meet the guidance provided by the state. So in this slide, you will see the instructional models based on the different phases as outlined in the My Safe Start Plan. Currently, we are in Phase Four. However, depending on the status of the My Safe Schools, there are four different scenarios for school opening in fall of 2020. So Phase Six, schools would be open for in-person instruction with minimal safety protocols. Phase Five, schools would be open for in-person instruction with moderate required safety protocols. Our current phase, which is Phase Four, schools are open for in-person instruction with more stringent required safety protocols. And then Phases One through Three, schools are not open for in-person instruction. So as I just stated, Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three, school buildings are closed and teaching and learning continues, however. This slide talks about what our instructional model would look like in Phases One, Two, and Three. So students would have scheduled live learning with their classroom teacher every day. The increased rigor and and expectations from this spring would be increased for emergency remote learning. And all students will be provided learning through their Google Classroom using district curriculum, textbooks, and resources. And we stay tuned to the guidance from the state about the phase that we are in. And again, currently, we are in Phase Four. So for Phase One, Two, and Three, there is no in-person instruction. Therefore, the health and safety protocols are limited to operations protocols. No transportation would be required, and no extracurricular activities would be allowed. The district would follow the State of Michigan guidance regarding food and nutrition services for our students during Phase One, Two, and Three. At this time, I would like to just give a huge shout out to Pat Schuchardt in our Food Department, her team, as well as Transportation, our volunteers who during the closure provided 264,834 meals from March 17th to June 23rd for our families. So with Pat's leadership, underneath Phil Francis, our Director of Operations, what a huge effort, and we appreciate, again, all the volunteers, Transportation Department, and Pat Schuchardt. Teresa?
So my name is Teresa O'Brien. I am the Chief Academic Officer for Livonia Public Schools, and I am in charge of curriculum instruction and the resources and materials our students use, K through 12. I just wanted to say a little bit about Phase Four and Five. So when the roadmap came out on June 30th, Phase Four allowed for in-person instruction with stringent required safety protocols. This, when this came out, this was a shift for us. Our subcommittees had been spending their time looking at the hybrid model where we thought we would have 50% of our students in person and 50% of our students online. So when the roadmap came out, we began to pivot because this was a bit of a shift for us. And we began to focus more on what in-person would look like and meeting those required safety protocols. So after our subcommittees met and we digested and discussed the information provided by the state, we began to talk about what in-person could look like under this new guidance. We started taking a look at what we had planned for the in-person part of our hybrid plan and began to flesh that out and discuss what that could look like in-person for all of our students. And based on that, Superintendent Oakrist is going to talk about our overview of our Return to Learn.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. And so we have a number of different elements that we'd like to cover this evening, and they really follow along with the required elements of the Michigan Safe Start Plan for school. But the initial recommendation that we share with you as of this moment in time this evening is on our next slide. And we are recommending two options from which families may choose for the 2020, 2021 school year. In-person instruction, full-time each day with a daily remote component, including Safe Start September, which I'll talk about in just a moment, or Livonia Virtual, a K-12, 100% online program. We've talked a lot about, again, this information that came to us in the Michigan Safe Start Roadmap. And we know that there has been certainly changing data across our state and across our region. And with that came our focus to begin to take a look at what would a return to learn in-person entail? What safety and health and safety protocols would we have in place? And what shifts would that require for our students and for our staff? And one of the things that we talked about within a number of our subcommittees was how we could do that in a way that was a graduated entry, reentry for our students as they come back to school. So this recommendation includes, as part of Safe Start September, a graduated reentry so that we can really have, as it's shared on this slide, a measured, thoughtful, and adjusted return to school with new health and safety protocols, our new student schedule, and a re-acclimation to the school setting. Our recommendation is that we start at the elementary and secondary level with half-days from September 8th through September 25th, so those first three weeks of school. And then on the other half of the day, students will be engaged in a remote learning so that they have the opportunity to also be introduced in a in a regular and ongoing way to that in the event that we would need to pivot in the event of a closure. So I'd like to move on to the next slide. And what we're going to talk about now is really within that plan. So as we take a look at Safe Start September and that graduated entry into the school year, what will that look like? And then as we transition, if if things, if things continue to move in a positive direction and we are, we feel comfortable moving into that, we would return then and begin that full-day instruction that following week. And these district health and safety protocols would be in place from day one. But it would really, that Safe Start September would allow us to really acclimate our students and our staff to these enhanced protocols. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Phil Francis, who's going to cover a number of these items as we move forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakrist. Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Phil Francis. I'm the Director of Operations for Livonia Public Schools. The slide we have in front of us is one of the items with regard to safety protocols. And this is something that the state plan had, in roadmap, had listed specifically in the in the state roadmap as all students and and staff, employees, wearing face masks at all times in common areas. And of course, LPS will be adhering to that as well. One of the the changes that we, that LPS is going beyond with our students is that the state had mentioned in their plan that they were stating that secondary students would be wearing masks in the classroom and elementary would not. But Livonia Public Schools will be having all students from elementary up through secondary and our post-secondary students in masks in the classrooms, common areas, in all, you know, at all areas other than, of course, when when eating their their meals. And this would not be true for students who are unable to tolerate a face mask or have documented medical conditions. The district personnel will be provided protective, personal protective equipment. And students would be asked to provide their own face coverings, but we would be supplying masks to to students who may have forgotten their mask on any given day. One of the biggest pieces with regard to face coverings is that it is something that is going to be new for many people to be wearing them throughout day. But together, we must work to have have a healthy and safe environment. And this means that everyone must do their part. It is a non-negotiable, it's essential, and it's a collective effort. We need to come together across each school, across the district, for the safety and health of everyone. Another item is physical distancing. There are many recommendations in the state plan, and some of them are listed in front of you, but this may not be an exhaustive list. Some ideas will be that we will have desks separated and facing a single direction. I know that we've received questions about some of the schools that have in classrooms two-person desks or tables. And what we will see later is we are working hard to reduce class sizes so that the number of single desks that are currently in many of our classrooms in many buildings, we would not need all of them in those classrooms. We could come and use them, bring them to other classrooms and replace the two-person desks or tables to to be able to get a physical separation between students. There are different items that we've already gotten into the buildings this summer, such as floor markings in places like copiers and print machines to help notify folks to make sure they have a physical distance from each other. We have plans to try to minimize traffic during passing times at secondaries and locker use, both at elementary and secondary. They will be used, but we will try to minimize them. We will make sure that visitors to the to the district's buildings are greeted at the main office, but they will not be entering the school unless there is a very specific and insinuating reason for them to actually enter into the school and/or a classroom. And we are asking staff to make sure that they try to keep a a physical distance from the students as much as possible when teaching and working with them. And we are working on other items as well, such as plexiglass barriers, et cetera. Cleaning protocols are an important part of this plan. And the the subgroup that worked on this worked diligently to follow the the both recommendations and requirements of the state plan. We we have as a district and will continue to provide supplies to have a healthy hygiene. The number-one thing that that anyone can do is to wash their hands with soap and warm water. We will continue to stock the the soap. We will have hand sanitizer. We've already put up hand sanitizer dispensers throughout all of the buildings and hallways and continue to generally have signs that reinforce, but also explicitly teaching students during that, those first few weeks of school, during those half-days, teaching staff will be asked to ensure that they're explicitly teaching and then re-teaching and reinforcing the washing of hands appropriately. And when that's not available to use hand sanitizer, you know, covering your your cough, all of those types of of items. And and there are other protocols that we will follow as a district. And whenever we have a change of cohorts in the classrooms, we will be disinfecting those those tabletops and desks, and every classroom, bus, high-touch area will be sanitized daily. Speaking of buses, the district transportation in Phase Four will allow us to safely transport all of our eligible students and give those that are eligible an opportunity to ride the bus. The the way this will work will not change from the past with regard to eligibility, but the change to our buses will be, one, we are installing hand sanitizing stations on all of our buses. And two, students and drivers or any paraprofessionals riding the bus, any staff, will be required to wear a facial covering. We must point out that the specialty routes like Webster, Mecat, et cetera, those will continue. And in Phase Five, we'll still continue many of these same practices on our bus routes and in our buses. And with regard to meals for students, the food and nutrition services will also continue. We will have breakfast and lunch meals available. Our breakfasts will be a grab-and-go, which is fairly common in many of our elementary schools. We will also have all meals still adhering to the the federal government's National School Lunch Program guidelines, but we will be suspending the use of the salad bars in all in all cafeterias. We will be getting our youngest learners in the cafeterias appropriately distanced and those that may have unique needs for eating in the cafeteria. And then the other elementary students would be eating in their classrooms. Our lunch periods, you'll see when we get to secondary, the secondary schedule, will have an additional lunch period so that we can spread out the number of students in the cafeteria in each of those periods. And I would turn this over to Dr. Terrell.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Francis.
You're welcome.
So the My Safe Start Roadmap requires Livonia Public Schools to cooperate with local public health department regarding protocols for screening students and staff as well as guidance regarding other pieces of information as well. We currently work with the Wayne County Health Department. We know how important the health and safety of our staff, our students, for our families, that this is an extremely important component of Livonia's Safe Start Plan. At this point in time, we are still awaiting guidance from the Wayne County Health Department. We are in contact with them almost daily regarding what their protocols will be, including those related to positive cases, as well as if an illness occurs during the school day. So we will continue to keep the community and our staff updated as soon as we receive the guidance from the Wayne County Health Department. But please know that we are in constant communication with them as we await their guidance.
And Dr. Terrell, I'm going to hop in just for a minute on that that slide because we did have a number of questions related to that. And I do want to echo what Dr. Terrell shared. We know these questions are really many of the same questions that our subgroup had with regard to the protocols. The protocols will be consistent across all of Wayne County schools. So there are 33 districts, and those protocols will be consistent across every district. We anticipated receiving those at the end of last week. We were told that we will be receiving them this Wednesday. They will be part of a virtual manual, and we will go through weekly updates as our superintendent team with our ISD and the Wayne County Health Department. So once we receive that manual, we will include this as part of a separate detailed FAQ. So families have that information, hopefully in the very near future, as well as as well as our staff.
Good evening, and I'm William Green, Director of Elementary Programs and District Services. I, prior to my current role, I was the principal at Roosevelt Elementary for five years and Garfield Elementary for 10 years. I appreciate all Livonia families and staff member, members, your input in the past and in the future is going to be essential. I want to thank you for your transparency and your input. I also would ask you to please deliver a message for our families to your students. We miss them. It'll almost be six months before school starts since we've last seen them live. And I just want you to please deliver the message that their principals and their teachers miss them dearly. So let's get on with the slideshow for the elementary overview pre-K through sixth grade. So as Superintendent Oakrist spoke, we're going to have a Safe Start September plan the first three weeks of school. And then in our fourth week, we'll go to full-day in-person instruction, Monday through Friday. There will be a new daily schedule with daily remote learning expectations. As far as our curriculum, the Tier One curriculum, which is the curriculum that all students receive, will be based on priority standards and will continue at all grades. And just like with each September, we're going to focus heavily on our social emotional needs of our students, building those relationships and getting off to a great start. So what does the Safe Start September look like? Weeks one through three, the first day of school is September 8th. And through the first three weeks of school, we're going to have a half a day of learning in person in the AM. And in the afternoon, there will be online remote learning from home. Please, I would like to note that Nijiiro Japanese Immersion, due to the health protocols we're awaiting on from the county, will begin their school year with remote learning on August 13th. A letter to the community from Mr. DeLuca will be sent out tomorrow to the Nijiiro community. So why are we doing this? Well, the rationale is we want to start with half-days so we can learn and practice all these new procedures that come with just the normal all these new procedures that come with just a normal start of the school year. But in addition, become comfortable with the COVID-19 safety measures, including face coverings. We want to focus on building relationships and supporting those social emotional needs of our students, build those regular interactions and obviously practice in-school those remote learning expectations. So when we have the students live, we can practice what we would expect of them in a remote learning environment. In addition, it'll allow our staff the afternoons to collaborate with one another, to get together with each other to, you know, discuss the safety protocols. And we also, we propose this to you to, you know, respect our families who are going to have childcare concerns and to have this information ahead of time so they can plan their September as well. So Week Four, the goal is starting September 28th, we'd return to a full-day schedule. Again, a remote learning expectation daily. And we as a group will continue to evaluate the status of cases in our community and guidance from the state as we move into full-day instruction. So some big themes as we think about the elementary day. Arrival, what will that look like? So for those of you that have been in an elementary school before and have elementary students, you probably have a little bit of a vision of what an arrival looks like. Well, in this year in our Safe Start September Plan, and while we're in Phase Four, we're going to have what's called a gentle arrival. Designated doors for students to arrive. They will go straight to their classroom to avoid congregating in groups and lines. And this will allow teachers then, once the students are in the classroom, to then dismiss if they need to, a few at a time, to their lockers to get ready for the instructional day. And we as people at Central Office, your building principals and your classroom teachers, will, just like we do every year, communicate these arrival procedures to you. We do this every year. We communicate the first few weeks of school, all about our arrival procedures, how to have a safe parking lot, how to have a safe entry into the building. And we'll continue those exact same processes this year, but there'll be some changes. And a gentle arrival will allow us to safely bring in all students into their classroom for an organized start of the day. As it was mentioned earlier by Mr. Francis, breakfast will continue to be in the classrooms. Students will pick up their breakfast and head directly to the classroom. And that's a great benefit, by the way, because students are able to be there for the morning message and be there for the typical start of the day by having their breakfast in the classrooms. So lunch, lunch is a bit different. All grades will eat in the classrooms, except our youngest learners and students with the unique needs who will eat in the cafeteria with physical distancing. And dismissal, following just like we did with arrival, will have a gentle dismissal. We've done this before at times during the normal school year. Our gym may be busy with the assembly and we have to do a gentle dismissal where we call students based on their buses and we dismiss it in that format. So that's not new learning for our elementary teachers. And as you can see, some things will remain the same, but there'll be some new wrinkles. And quite honestly, some of the new wrinkles I'm very excited about, such as the gentle arrival. Recession, so a change in the instructional day will be recess. We basically a teacher decision of when they're going to take their students out. I did that as a teacher. We've done that at staffs over the years. And, you know, this is a benefit to this is students sometimes need recess at 9:30 in the morning. And sometimes they need it at 2:00 in the afternoon. And sometimes they need a 10-minute break at 11:30. This will allow our teachers to have a staggered recess schedule. It will also keep our students in cohorts. That's one of our primary safety objectives at the elementary level is as much as possible in the recommendations to keep cohorts together. Art will be in the art room with time for cleaning between classes. Music will be outdoors when singing or playing instruments. Indoors with, will be percussion and music appreciation. And physical education will be outside as much as possible. When it's indoor, students will participate in activities that are strenuous and allow for physical distancing. And then our LMC and IT classes will be in the lab or the LMC with time for cleaning. Before we go to the next slide, I do want to address, these are all big changes on this page. And I want to have a shout-out to our special area teachers in the district who've been working tirelessly in their subgroup to continue to provide the arts and physical education to our students in a safe and enriching environment. So it's been very exciting to hear the different work that they've been undertaking to make our Safe Start possible. As Mr. Francis mentioned, face coverings will be required for all staff and students, with exceptions for documented medical needs for the Michigan Safe Start document. So for example, students unable to tolerate a face covering due to a documented medical condition, a clear face shield or transparent partition will be provided as options for their own safety as well as others. Physical distancing is obviously a challenge at the elementary level. That was why it was a recommendation in Phase Four. And as much as possible and to the extent feasible, we're going to address this by lowering class size, rearranging furniture in the classroom. The teacher delivery instruction will look a bit different. And this will all help to address our goal of physical distancing. But we're realistic in knowing and based on the guide map that this is an area that will be more of a challenge, but we feel good that with the face coverings, that that will help that situation. And cleaning, as Mr. Francis said, in Phase Four, all requirements of the plan will be followed. And then in Phase Five, we're determined to continue many of these same practices. As far as transportation, transportation for all eligible students will be provided. Bus routes and schedules are still to be determined based on enrollment. And student eligibility to ride a bus will not change from previous years. Specialty routes such as Webster will continue. And students must wear face coverings and use hand sanitizer per state guidelines. So grab-and-go breakfast, it's a great way to start the day. It's similar to the practice we currently have. And students will pick up their breakfast on their way into school and proceed to their classroom. One of the things that most families may not recognize is we have a robust arrival procedure at all of our elementary buildings where we have many adults that are present outside of low-bearing teachers or classroom teachers that are active participants in our daily arrival. And that's going to continue as well in our Safe Start September Plan. Lunch meals will be delivered to the classrooms. And as I mentioned earlier, our youngest learners and those with unique needs will eat in the cafeteria appropriately a distance. We've had teams set down lunch tables and map that out. And so we're excited to be able to provide that, those opportunities to our youngest learners and those with unique needs. And I'd like to introduce Ms. Teresa O'Brien, Director of Academic Services.
Thank you. I'm going to walk you through our overview of our secondary day and schedule. So we are also at the secondary level, going to start with our Safe Start September Plan for the first three weeks of school with a graduated entry for our students. Our students, when they come in the fourth week of school, will also have a new daily schedule, which I will share with you in a few minutes, with a daily remote learning requirement also. We wanted to have our students participate in our Google classrooms right from the beginning of the year and have them have that remote learning as a part of their education right from the start of the year. Our, just like every year, we're going to have prioritized grade level and course curriculum based on our state standards. And they will be the focus of our in-person and our online learning. And we'll, like every year, start with social emotional, building our relationships, supporting our students who need them, knowing that many of them we haven't seen, like Mr. Francis and Mr. Green said, in several months. So we look forward to starting that way. We are recommending a block schedule for our secondary schools, both our middle and our high schools. This schedule is an instructional model, which has a longer class period with less classes in a given day. So students will attend three classes a day instead of six. And one of the reasons our committee came up with this was for the health and safety of both students and staff. It limits the number of times students get remixed with a new group of students. It limits the number of times we have passing time and where students are moving from one place to another. The instructional time will remain the same, but it will be delivered differently than in previous years. This is a sample high school block schedule. If you notice, it starts with a time for teachers to collaborate and prepare for their day. It has 100-minute blocks, three of them in a given day. On a given Monday, students would be in first hour, second hour, and third hour. On Tuesday, fourth, fifth, and sixth. And then it would continue to roll from there. Passing times have been shortened, so students are not having the opportunity to get together with their friends in between classes. And we have built a model that has four lunches, so we can spread our secondary students out in our cafeterias and other adjoining spaces for lunch. And this model has a shortened student day, which then allows our students to have remote learning every day, some type of asynchronous. So not a live teaching by their teacher, but an instructional video module or lesson and some type of assignment that goes along with that. The sample for the middle school is very similar. If you notice the start times, we are recommending that our middle school students start prior to our high school students. So our middle school students would move to the earlier start time and high schools start to the second start time of our bus schedule. In this plan, their longer collaboration time would be at the end of their day. So teachers would arrive at school and pretty quickly, students would arrive after. And students then would leave each day at 1:20, again, having a expected remote learning lesson that they would do each day. Again, some of the benefits of a block schedule, so students would have three classes a day. So they'd have an A schedule and a B schedule. So like I explained before, first hour, second hour, and third hour on Monday, fourth, fifth, and sixth on Tuesday. Each class period is in 100 minutes. And then they would rotate following that. Instructional minutes overall are the same. They just would be delivered differently. Plus, students would have their remote learning in each one of their courses. Our Safe Start September or any other half-days that students would have, those three classes then would be shortened to fit the half-day schedule. So in Safe Start September, those classes would be 60 minutes long instead of 100. So students would have required, and asynchronous means students can access this learning at any time. So it's not live. There's not a nine o'clock lesson that students would need to attend live or a four o'clock lesson in a given day. But instead, this learning would be available to them anytime in their evening or early morning, what works for their family, for them to access that learning and then complete the activity. The modules, assignments, or lessons are required. They're a part of our coursework. And during those first several weeks in Safe Start September, that part of our goal would be teachers would teach students those expectations. Have students get on their Google Classroom while students are in class and have them model and support them, finding where assignments are held in their Google Classroom. Find how to turn in an assignment into the Google Classroom. So teach their students while they're right there. That would be our expectation. Again, we are starting with the first three weeks of September as half-days. Students attending school in the morning and afternoon, online learning at home. Again, this would give us our opportunities in our middle schools and our high schools to debrief each day right after lunch and solidify and discuss how protocols worked, what areas need to be improved. It would also have our students and staff become more comfortable with our safety measures. Practice wearing masks for a half a day for the first couple of weeks as we build to full days. Beyond that, it would also give staff time to build those relationships and focus on some social emotional learning needs that their students would have and build to their, our full, robust schedule. So our high schools, similar to our elementary schools, our students will arrive and go directly to their first hour. So we would have a clear and consistent drop-off time for all students, which will be communicated. Students would drop off their coat to their locker at the beginning and the end of the day. But again, with a block schedule, they would only need to carry materials for three classes instead of six. So we'd like to limit the amount of times students are going back to their lockers. So again, not to have those places where kids are congregating. Breakfast, like elementary, would be a grab-and-go. I shared a little bit about our lunch schedule that we have created a schedule where we have some additional lunch periods and are investigating using additional areas so students can be physically distanced whenever possible. So our outdoor courtyards, our schools that have two cafeterias and large group areas. And like Mr. Francis and Mr. Green shared, all students will wear masks on the bus and use hand sanitizer. As I shared in our sample schedule, our passing time would be reduced to five minutes. So we would like students to get right to class. So again, reduce that congregating time. And when the school day ends, we would really be encouraging our students to exit the school. So trying to limit their exposures to others as much as possible during the school day. Again, like Mr. Green said, the elective classes, we plan to offer our wide variety of electives to our students. Music and physical education are two areas that we might have to adjust what those classes look like prior to this year in order to meet the health and safety requirements. One of the things that this block schedule has also given us was an opportunity to reduce class size. So we have taken students in five classes and spread them over six classes. So a teacher is teaching six hours, so three hours on Monday and three hours on Tuesday and so forth, but taking those same number of students, but spreading them out in a way to reduce class size in all of our classrooms. So some of our classrooms are, have larger class sizes and there are more students, say, in a music class, a band class particularly. This would give us the opportunity to spread those students out into two sections instead of one. Like Mr. Francis shared earlier, we will be requiring face coverings for all staff and students. And again, students who cannot tolerate a face mask during, due to a medical condition, we would provide them a clear face shield or a partition that would help support their safety and others. Physical distancing, again, making sure that we moved our desks as far apart as possible in our classrooms. And again, following what Mr. Francis said, following all of the requirements of the Michigan Safe Start cleaning protocols. Transportation will be provided as last year. All eligible students will have it available to them. Bus routes and schedules are still to be determined based on our enrollment numbers. We will continue to offer our Mecat and LCTC bus routes. And again, we will be requiring facial coverings for all students and the bus driver on each bus. And buses will be sanitized daily and high-touch areas regularly. Secondary students will eat in the cafeteria, as I shared earlier, with additional spacing around the cafeteria. And we have added up to two, one school, one additional lunch period and two of our schools, two additional lunch periods in order to reduce the amount of students at each lunch period in order to provide more physical distancing. And now, Dr. Terrell.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. I just wanted to take a moment to talk about the Special Education Task Force. You have heard a lot of discussion about the social emotional well-being of our students, the support for our students as well as our staff. Our Special Education Task Force was charged with that task. Our Special Education Task Force was charged with that task of providing the social-emotional supports for our staff and our students. So we are prepared to be able to do that. We have many online training videos for our staff and our students regarding how to start a conversation and build those relationships with your students, both in person and virtually after an extended leave from school. Again, building those relationships, as Mrs. O'Brien said, are crucial for us, not only for this year, but should we have to pivot to another type of remote learning, those relationships online will be very important for our teachers as well as our students. In addition to building the social-emotional supports for our students and staff, we are also currently working on safety protocol, public service announcements, if you will, for staff, students, and families. So we are currently in the process of creating videos for a variety of our students on what is a face mask? Why do I have to wear a face mask? How do I put a face mask on? And what does that look like for all of the students in my class? Looking at providing transportation videos as well. What are the new transportation videos? And videotaping some of our students getting onto a bus so that our students can see it before that actually will happen. How to physically distance, what that looks like in a school, what that looks like in a classroom. And then some of the basics, going back to the basics for all of our students. How to wash our hands, how to sneeze appropriately, and how to cough appropriately. So I just wanted to share some. That is not all of the videos and professional development that we will be putting out for our staff, students, and families. But I did want to give you an idea of what the Special Education Task Force was looking at. So I want to start off this slide with saying I cannot express the complexities of the IEP process. And even though special education has very limited slides, every student's IEP is an individual IEP with an entire team that includes the parent to discuss programming for our students. I also think it's important for the community at large to know that first and foremost, our students with special needs are general education students. They have an IEP to support their unique learning needs. Therefore, all of the health and safety protocols that you have heard earlier apply to our special education students. So students academic, their social-emotional, their supplementary aids and services, for example, any type of accommodation a student may require, occupational therapy, physical therapy, social work services, their programming needs and services will be addressed through the IEP process. Those IEPs, as we have learned from March to June, can be held virtually. So to the greatest extent possible, based on parent's schedule and parent need, we will be holding our IEPs virtually. So our kindergarten through 12th grade students with IEPs, again, will follow the elementary and secondary schedules. Our pre-K, our early childhood programs, our preschool moderately cognitively impaired program, and our Great Start readiness program schedules after the Safe Start September will remain the same schedule as they were in the 2019-2020 school year. Our post-secondary work skills program, both the Western Wayne Skill Center Program as well as the Livonia Transition Program, will continue to have 50% of their time spent in-class learning and 50% on the work site, learning those employability skills. We are currently working with our Greater Livonia Community, who has been absolutely phenomenal, supporting our work sites in the past, to see which work sites that we will continue to be able to offer our students come September 8. The remote learning options will be discussed at an IEP with our families because that would be considered a change of placement for our students. So we would hold an IEP to discuss any type of remote learning options with our families. I think it's also important to remind our community that we share programming with 11 other school districts in Western Wayne County. Transportation for our center-based county programs will be based on the operating district schedule. So Livonia Public Schools operates the moderately cognitively impaired program, preschool through 12th grade. Our ASD program, our autism program, pre-K through post-secondary. Our visually impaired program at Churchill High School. And then we also offer our post-secondary work skills program at Garfield for our students who are 18 to 26. So Livonia Public School, as the operating district for our programs, will set the schedule for the programs that we offer. Now, that means for our students that access other programs in other districts. So our LPS students attend programs in other districts, Garden City, Northville, Redford Union, Wayne Westland, and the Michigan School for the Deaf in Flint. So when we are sending our students to those programs for which their IEP places them, our schedule will then be based on what those individual school districts and programs have delineated for their programs.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Terrio. My name is Daniel Willenborg, and I'm the Director of Secondary Programs. I had the distinct honor to oversee and work with many coaches, teachers, parents, and others in a subgroup that looked at what happens before and after school and what about those programs. So I want to touch base on a couple of those. I'll start with athletics. And you know, our athletics folks have to follow those guidelines of many resources to include, you know, their guiding principles of the Michigan High School Athletic Association and the National Federation of State High School Associations, as well as we're also following the guidelines of the Michigan Roadmap and, of course, the LPS District Administrative Direction, guidance from our cabinet and myself and our board. I want to emphasize our athletics. Some of our athletic teams have been at this for a while. And we had approval through our steering committee in late June, you know, to start some conditioning. It was allowable. We put in a program that followed the safety protocols, you know, have protocols for screening and for cleaning. On July 17, the Michigan High School Athletic Association announced that we'll follow, throughout the state, would adhere to the regular three-season rotation of sports. You know, but later this week, we expect an update from their representative council, you know, that will either confirm or somehow suggest a change to those plans. Our first day of practice, official practice, begins on August 10 for football and August 12 for other athletic teams. You know, I want to emphasize, you know, our ADs, our Athletic Council, our principals, our cabinet will continue to review recommendations from the Michigan High School Athletic Association and communicate, you know, our district direction, you know, based on those guidelines. But again, we follow and are currently following the hygiene precautions, you know, to include no unnecessary contact and separate water bottles, assigned locker room spread, you know, showering at home, everyday washing of clothes. You know, we've looked at things like, how do we handle home events? You know, and we're looking at multiple points of entry, you know, portable sanitation units for the visiting team, outdoor half-times for football. You know, limitations of spectators is a significant factor we have to honor in our considerations, which means that our home events may be limited to just parents attending. You know, we will limit or cancel concession sales. Maybe they have more workers in the stands, you know, and of course, the workers will follow the hygiene practices as well. You know, so those athletic events, we meet at least once a week, you know, to talk through what's the latest update and, you know, how things will start. I want to talk a bit about marching band. Again, this is a before and after-school things, but certainly a significant aspect of, you know, whole child, the whole child learning is what they do musically. And marching band is a significant, big event for our high schools. And like athletics, we've started. We've started back in late June with some percussion and color guard practices. You know, our plans, you know, certainly are to follow those same stringent safety protocols in terms of screening, in terms of cleaning, and in terms of physical distancing. And our marching band camps, which are usually away-type events, you know, we've decided we're going to hold those at home on this homeschool campus, you know, beginning in mid-August. And registration is starting, you know, as we speak. You know, all Phase 4, while we're in Phase 4, all activities can only take place outdoors, you know, less than 100 in what we call pods of less than 20. So you'll see different sectionals practicing in groups of less than 20. You know, there's health screening. I just want to go over, again, some examples of those safety measures, that health screening is taking place. Sometimes as they walk up, sometimes it's online. You know, there's no sharing of instruments, water bottles, or other personal items. Other examples from the next page include, you know, our brass players will follow strict water release procedures. You know, we expect, we will wear face masks when it's feasible. Instructors will be wearing face masks. And what you have on those pictures is a couple of examples of what it might look like. And, you know, to the left is a flute with the facial shield. There's also some spray deflectors, which is the middle picture on a flute. And I know that some of the booster clubs are working on face masks that have an opening over the lips for the brass players, as you see in that third picture. Again, physical distancing will be stressed and implemented in use of outdoor, large spaces for instruction and practice. We'll spread them out as best as we can. I do want to talk about SAC, our School-Aged Child Care. This is the before and after-school childcare. And based on our safety protocols, you know, there's many challenges to run in our SAC programs, including, you know, limitations on space, the licensing requirement, the heterogeneous mixing of K through 6 students, the LoRa regulations. You know, our current recommendations are to, during those first three weeks, the current plans are to offer AM SAC and not the after-half-day type SAC. We are still developing plans for registration and selection, and we expect that there will be possible limitations to enrollment to SAC. We're looking at, you know, right now, looking at a 20 to 2 ratio, student-to-instructor ratio during Phase 4, and moving it up to 30 to 2 student-instructor ratio during Phase 5. Also wanted to cover briefly just this idea of what happens in elementary schools and the secondary schools with regards to all the events, special events that take place. And I want to emphasize, it's, you know, a lot of these things have to be hashed out yet with the input of our principals and other school personnel, who haven't, we haven't been able to access fully at this time. And we're just now maybe 10 days into working on, you know, our current face-to-face instructional plan. So I can say that in the work we have done, you know, we're looking at turning many of the events that we normally run, like kindergarten and the 5th grade orientation, you know, looking at providing virtual meetings, you know, to introduce students and families to the new year. And kindergarten roundup, students will be invited to the school in person prior to the start of the school year. We are looking to try to make sure there's a, that they do get a chance to see the school before the school year begins. And again, we'll do our due diligence to make sure that there's, the safety guidelines are followed in those events. Next slide talks about our open house, generally changing over to a virtual tour. Our curriculum night, again, scheduled virtually. Most programs that we're looking at now, we're looking at moving to a virtual platform. Parent-teacher conferences, we can do some in-person with safe physical distancing. Virtual options may be offered. PGSa meetings, we need an input from our PGSa personnel. But, you know, generally, those are smaller meetings that we can run in-school, in-person, following guidance. When we talk about the secondary events, again, most events, we look at being virtual events. Our open house, where it's a virtual meeting with each teacher. Our parent-teacher conferences by appointment, possibly in individual classrooms, you know, or offered simply as a virtual option for parents. And again, our PGSa meetings, you know, with physical distancing and facial coverings, you know, we can run those in-person. Now, our next slide, when we talk about our large school gatherings, our dances, our assemblies, it's not allowable. So when we talk about a homecoming dance, you know, we're not planning for that right now. We talk about school clubs, and it depends on the club, of course. But, you know, we can meet after-school in small groups, spreading out. You know, certainly, there's no overnight trips involved. And we'll follow the safety protocols. We talk about our theater and play performances. Our directors are currently looking at some outdoor shows that they can run. So their rehearsals and their shows, right now, are planned as outdoor events. We talk about the big field of robotics. Robotics takes a lot of directions from an organization called First Robotics. And so they have to adhere to their guidelines as well as the LPS guidelines. And I know they're exploring several different options to include a shortened season. But certainly, we remain hopeful, you know, that there could be an event, as we've had in the past, at Churchill High School in the spring. You know, and that could be an event that has limited spectatorship. A lot of that still has to be hashed out. And, you know, we have several months to still work on that. So there's a quick down and dirty on our after-school, our extracurricular before-after-school events. I'll turn it back over to Ms. O'Brien.
Thanks, Mr. Willenborg. At the beginning of this presentation, Superintendent Oquist shared that we would be offering two different opportunities for our students this year. An in-person education. And we have spent the last several minutes sharing that opportunity. But now I am happy to share Livonia Virtual. We will be offering a K-12 online opportunity for students to participate in both live and assigned asynchronous learning, which I'll explain in a minute. Our school program will be taught by Livonia teachers utilizing our curriculum whenever possible. We will not be able to offer Livonia Virtual for some of our magnet programs. We will utilize Michigan Virtual for courses as needed for our secondary students. So if we don't have enough students, we may possibly be utilizing a Michigan Virtual course to provide students the courses that they would like to take. But just like in our buildings each year, we may not be able to offer all of our courses through Livonia Virtual. We have that issue every single school year based on the enrollment numbers in our secondary courses. Our special education students' placement for Livonia Virtual would be made based on the IEP team's decision. This program would follow our Livonia pacing and timeline so that these students would be following right along, parallel with our students who are in-person. This would allow the Livonia Virtual teachers to collaborate with the in-person teachers and provide students a similar timeline using the same assessments and the same curriculum resources whenever possible. Beginning August 4, we will open our commitment window. So August 4 to August 10, this is a short window for families to So August 4th to August 10th, this is a short window for families to decide if they would like to make a semester commitment for middle school and high school, and a trimester commitment at the elementary level. This would allow us to put the staffing in place to provide students their online education. And staffing would be determined once we know how many students at each grade level would be participating in this educational opportunity. We will be providing more information to staff from our Human Resources Department regarding how we will staff these classes. So I use the word synchronous and asynchronous, and I think since March 13th, these have become new words for many of us, many of you, they might not be. For myself, they have been. So synchronous is live learning, where students will log on to a given platform at a certain time every day to receive instruction. And this example would be an elementary example, where they would log on and have live teaching in their everyday math lesson, our integrated reading and writing instruction, and guided reading. Their asynchronous learning would be through their Google Classroom, there would be instruction and assignments that students could access on their own time that would fit a family's schedule. So practice, math practice, continuing to use the everyday math journals with their math boxes and games, some reading and research and writing that's linked to the integrated module, maybe around a science topic or a social studies topic. Word study work can be done asynchronously, and, you know, project-based learning, some opportunities for students to do some project-based activities. At our secondary level, each course would have live instruction daily, but it would still, we would like to follow the same block schedule that our high schools and middle schools. So three courses a day would have live instruction, and three courses would have asynchronous learning that would give teachers a block of time to work and support their students through their live learning, and build relationships, and have engagement strategies for their interactions. And then the asynchronous learning would also be rich standard-based instruction utilizing our curriculum resources. It could be through videos or simulations that come with some of our programs, and then independent assignments that students would be doing asynchronously. So I'll turn it back to Superintendent Oakley to share a summary of this evening's presentation.
That will make it easier to hear the wrap-up. Thank you. So I'm going to ask if we can advance to the next slide, and just remind us where one of the places we started was, we had talked about our teams starting with different, three different return-to-learn scenarios while we awaited state guidance. And I want to take a moment to talk about the hybrid option. It is not an option we are bringing to you for recommendation this evening, but our teams did spend quite a bit of time on this option. And so I wanted to make sure that we spent a few minutes talking a little bit about what some of the challenges would be in this model. So essentially, in a hybrid option, you would have half of the students attending at any given time. As each of our teams worked through this at both the elementary and the secondary level, there was actually a recommendation for two different schedules. The elementary students would have been on a half-day model, meaning half of the students would attend in the morning and half would attend in the afternoon. Secondary students would attend in-person two days a week and be engaged in remote learning three days a week. So we knew that there would be some challenges in and of itself with that, not only for families and for their schedules, but significant conflict for our transportation. And we would have only been able to provide transportation for our special education students in perhaps K-2, possibly K-4, based on the varying schedules. We also thought that for a long-term solution, to have our young students online for 50% or more of their time would require significant support from parents for a long period of time. We also, in consideration for our staff, really received the feedback that teachers would not only be teaching two groups of students in-person, so they would actually be repeating those lessons one time for each group, but in addition to that, they would also be providing remote learning for the opposite class while they were not in session, which is really a significant immersion into two different programs for an extended period of time. We would also ultimately, over the course of the week, have all of our students in the school. Therefore, the benefits of the reduced exposure are limited other than on a day-by-day basis. And then we were, would have some challenges with regard to students who were not there full day, would not necessarily be able to receive in their free and reduced benefits both the breakfast and the lunch for those attending the half-day. So those were just some of the challenges with regard to the hybrid model. I want to acknowledge the time and effort that our subgroups put into this, because really, this was probably the most unique and challenging scenario that we presented to them. Certainly, the fully closed model in Phases 1 through 3 would have been all remote, so that would have been one singular focus, or the full-return model, again, would have been more similar to what we've had in the past. So really, I do want to acknowledge the efforts that were made in taking a look at this hybrid model. But one of the things that we really do believe is that we were able to accomplish a number of the elements and the benefits of the hybrid model through the recommendations that we are making, especially at the secondary level. So by utilizing the block scheduling, we're able to limit the number of passing time and exposure to students in each class and throughout the day. At the elementary level, we're able to keep our elementary students in their cohort for recess and lunch, arrival, dismissal, specials. Overall, we are committed to focusing on lower-class sizes. We have already allocated a number of additional teachers at the K-6 level to lower class sizes at each of our schools. And then we are also working to do that same thing at the secondary level by utilizing all six classes, and being able to utilize the same number of students we would have spread into five, but move that now into six, as well as adding additional tenths of staffing to each of our schools as well. So I just want to bring us back around and share the task force timeline, and remind our community that tomorrow, and I'll have you go to the next slide, we are going to be sharing this information, both this portion of the meeting, as well as the slideshow with our parents and guardians and all of our staff, who will be emailed a process for gathering feedback on this evening's return-to-learn plan. We will also be spending quite a bit of time over the next few days, as we gather your questions, creating a detailed FAQ that will be really divided into the main categories, which we believe people will have questions, so that we can address some of the specific implementation questions or clarifications you may have after this presentation. We certainly will ask, I know our Board of Education members, as well as our district administration is anxious to review that feedback that will come from our community, and then our board will reconvene on Monday, August 3rd, to vote on these recommendations. So again, our Safe Start Plan is really, I think we can take the screen off now, thank you. Our Safe Start Plan is, again, really focused on that graduated re-entry in September. Again, a thoughtful, measured way to begin the school year, to allow our students to acclimate to the re-entry and to the new health and safety protocols. Again, focused on lowering class sizes and physical distancing, requiring face coverings for all, using stringent cleaning and sanitizing protocols in every area of our schools, on our buses, in our offices, in each of our departments. Again, working to avoid congregation by taking a look at arrival and dismissal, the way we cohort our students, and the way we use larger spaces within our schools for any of our larger classes. So there are really a number of elements that we have really focused on in order to consider the health and well-being of not only our students, but our staff as well. So we'll continue to share more information with you over the coming days. We'll look forward to your feedback and input. And I'd like to open it now to our Board of Education for any questions or comments that you may have.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakley. Mr. Centers.
Dan Centers, Board of Education. Mrs. Oakley, first, it's tremendous how many volunteer hours went into this. I was fortunate enough to sit on the committee. It was really tremendous how our community came together to work on this. Everyone wants to get this right, from people who have emailed us to people who sat on the committee. So we're very lucky to have so many people engaged on this issue. One question where I think people may have a question about is, you talked about elementary instruction, that if someone opts for in-person instruction, that there'll also be an online component. Can you talk a little bit more about why that is and what the benefits are, just a little bit more in-depth?
Absolutely. Mr. Green, I'm going to let you go ahead and tackle that question initially, and then I'll certainly be happy to add anything from there, and Mrs. O'Brien as well.
Sure, thank you. So as far as the remote learning component that is going to be part of the school day daily, currently, for instructional hours, we would have a six-hour and 15-minute student day. We are currently in-person in our adjusted school day, as we mentioned in the slides, at 5 hours and 45 minutes. The proposal would include a 30-minute asynchronous iReady instructional component daily for students. What's nice about that being asynchronous is families could decide if that would be something they'd want their students doing at 8:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the afternoon, 6:00 at night. Our staff have years of experience with iReady, and this would be a way for iReady to go to scale. We'd be able to analyze students' progress in reading and math that way as well, and then it obviously would allow us to hit those student hours. Now, as far as remote learning, whether we have to shift to it or not, there is also a commitment to improve with rigor and clear expectations are remote learning experiences for students, which will also be a big part of that safe September return. So I hope that answered your question as far as the daily required online learning component. One of the things that we did discover this past spring is, teachers across the district were really excited about new ways of thinking how they could deliver instruction to students. Certainly was an emergency situation, but one of the silver linings, so to speak, was a staff discovered potentials of how to reach students in different ways that they may have never considered prior. So that would be also part of the equation moving forward. Does that make sense?
That does. That's really helpful. And, you know, thank you for, you know, expanding on the rigor that students would face in the fall. I do think, you know, it was an unexpected situation in the spring, and teachers really did a great job of kind of doing what they could in the moment, but now that we've had some time to prepare, if people are doing an online learning option, that will be more rigorous for them.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Thank you, President Johnson. I have to say, I know that with 14,000 students and 2,000 staff members, that we all have our own personal needs and styles and family situations, and we need to come up with resolutions that can hopefully meet the needs of most of our families. I think this gives us two really great options for families who don't want to send their kids back. We have the virtual option for families that are comfortable with sending their children back during, I think it's Phases 4, 5, and 6, that they have that option as well. And then understanding that, I believe if we go back to Phases 1 to 3, then the children in the in-person learning would then go to remote. So I've got a couple things, but I just, one thing that we talked about at one of the board meetings was, again, a terminology thing that we keep, we need to try and keep straight, is that the virtual is the virtual online school, that students are in like a virtual building, and that the in-person students then would be considered remote learners. So when we're talking about virtual, it's 100% online or 100% virtual learning, and then remote learning is that pairing with the in-class, or if we go to Phase 1 or 1 to 3, then we turn into remote learners as well. I think this gives parents some options. I'm wondering what the choices are. How are we deciding, or what's the format for staff and their concerns about coming back? Can we cover that maybe a little bit? And I know our teachers are going to be doing some virtual teaching, and how the staff is going to be covered is, and how we're going to sort of be able to meet the needs of everyone staff-wise.
I'd certainly be happy to jump in on that item. And for the virtual school, once we know, we'll have a window, a short window of time in which we ask our community to indicate a commitment for their child. They wouldn't need to register, because they're already part of the public schools, but a commitment to move to 100% virtual programming. Once we know that, and we know how many students at every grade level and from each school, then we will work in very short order to determine how many students, or how many teachers we would need to utilize for that virtual program. And so, once we do that, we will communicate that out, and teachers will have an opportunity to share their interest for doing so. And so certainly, we have talked about the importance of that being something that teachers were certainly interested in doing, as well as had a background in instructional technology and delivering instruction in that way. And then we would certainly work to pair that where we can. And so for students, for teachers, would have that option to consider, and we really don't know how many people that will entail, because we do not know how many parents will choose that option. Once we do, we'll certainly be communicating directly with our staff on that information and on their choices with regard to next year.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I have a second question, and I'm not sure if maybe it was, will be covered in a different segment, but, you know, we've talked a lot about the protocols of making sure that everyone stays safe. We know in reality that with the, how easily that COVID spreads, that we are going to run into some cases, and we didn't talk about the protocols if someone gets sick. Is that in another presentation, or is that something we can cover tonight?
No, that's absolutely a huge piece, and that was, that was the information we're waiting on from the Wayne County Health Department.
Okay.
The Safe Start Roadmap did not give clear requirements for that. The only requirement in the roadmap that stated is that you must follow your local health department, direct is that you must follow your local health department directives with regard to screening protocols and responding to any case, either suspected cases or confirmed cases of the virus. And so that information, we had hoped was going to come to us by last Friday, and that we would have been able to include more details. But I do know, in the drafts that I've seen, there is very clear protocol with regard to, for symptomatic students or staff, a confirmed case, how that must be addressed within the school, what communications must take place on that, as well as screening protocols. So we anticipate that that will be sent to Wayne County Superintendent's this Wednesday. And as soon as we have that, that will be a separate communication that we will be adding. We know that that's certainly on the minds of our parents, as well as our staff. What we don't want to do is jump ahead of the information from Wayne County. So while we have seen some drafts of that guidance, we know there will be very specific protocol to follow, and that every district in the county will have to follow those same guidelines. Unfortunately, we do not have that in our hands yet, but we do expect that this week.
I apologize. You did mention that, and that went right past me. It seems like, along with all of the discussions and the task force, that we are adhering very strongly to the recommendations of the state and the county based on what I'm assuming would be the most up-to-date and relevant scientific information. And I appreciate the fact that we're really trying, you know, we're sticking very closely to those recommendations. And at some points, with the mask wearing and such, going above and beyond, again, with the cleaning regulations. Phase four, the same cleaning protocols would be moved into phase five as well, just for added assurance. And, again, this is tough. This is really tough. And I know that it's tough on parents, and it's tough on the kids. And I know that there is not one perfect solution. And I hope that we can find an adequate resolution for the majority of our parents, and that we can, we can work together through this school year to get through. But we just have to do the best that we can under the circumstances that we have forging on in unknown territory. We've never done this before. And also remembering that hindsight is 2020. You know, we're moving forward with the best information that we have tomorrow. We don't know what that brings, and we will move forward with whatever's put in front of us and do the best that we can. So I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Johnson. I was going to say a lot of the things that Mrs. Bonnefield just touched on. So thanks for stealing my thunder, Tammy. I love the use of your word adequate. In this particular situation, there are no winners. Nothing comes close. And first, I'd like to thank everybody who's tuning in tonight, because it is exactly this pulling together of the community that we need. In this particular situation, everyone is going to have to compromise. I wish that weren't the case. I wish we could find some obvious solution that was just lurking behind our vision and say, oh, there it is. But we can't do that. So whether you're going back to school or considering the virtual learning, it's not gonna be perfect. You're going to have to compromise on something, and that's what communities do. So adequate is about the best we can hope for right now. And like you said earlier, we don't know what tomorrow brings. So even what we're thinking of for today might change. So that being said, I appreciate the fact that the community is willing to pull together. This is about the safety of our kids. It's about the safety of our staff, too. Sometimes we forget that the children aren't the only ones in those buildings, and we need to consider the safety of everyone who's there. That being said, I would like a little bit of clarification or explanation about a couple of things related to the virtual school. I believe that at an earlier meeting, we were told that it is similar to having a separate school building. And in fact, that's how the state treats it. Does that mean that the staff of that school will be dedicated to that school, to the virtual online learning? Or will there be teachers who teach both at the schools themselves and then do remote or online learning as well? I don't want to confuse it with remote learning. That's not the same thing. So that's one question, is just a clarification on that structure. And then I noticed that one of the slides where it talked about the possibility to transition in, at the natural breaks, whether that's a trimester or a semester. To, so for example, if a family had chosen to do online learning, when the semester changed, they would have an option to make a change in their structure, in their choice. And I appreciate that because we're using the Levonia curriculum in every circumstance, the parallel learning is definitely the goal here. So transitions can be facilitated. But I did notice that there's no guarantee about where we'll have openings for someone who is switching gears in the middle of the school year. So I hope that you'll address that as well.
Sure. So I'd be happy to do my best with those items. And I also want you to know that we are planning on sharing more detailed information next week at our study session with the Board of Education about the virtual program. So we will go, we knew it was a lot for this evening to cover each different aspect in detail, but we do want the community to be able to have additional information before we ask them to make that commitment. So let me try to give you at least some answer to a piece of those. And then please know that as we continue to finalize those plans, we will have more information for you on the third. But let me go back to the idea of, one of the things that the board had shared with us when we talked about this at our prior session, and you gave your support for moving forward with this as an option. The board had asked about whether or not families would be able to opt in or opt out of the program. And so while we certainly want to provide as much flexibility as possible, we also have to commit staff, both in our school buildings and our brick and mortar and our in-person, and commit staff for the virtual program. And so we want to be certain that if a student was going to perhaps choose the virtual option for a trimester, let's say at the elementary level, and then they wanted to come back into their home school, we believe that in the, in the great majority of cases, we would be able to accommodate that. What we want to do, though, is certainly have the caveat that states that we don't want to grow class size far beyond that which we're working so hard to lower. So let's say that we happen to have an anomaly at third grade at a particular school. And let's say we had six students wanting to return to that grade level at that school. What we don't want to do is have worked hard to lower class size, have those numbers in and those commitments in by families, and then all of a sudden get a resurgence that we were not expecting. And so we believe in most cases, we would be able to accommodate the return to that grade level to their home school. But we just want to make note that it may be for the remainder of the year, they would have to attend at a school other than their home school. Again, absolutely, our goal would be to have them back at their home school. But we don't, having never done this before, and not knowing at this point in time how many families would be choosing that option, it's difficult for us to guarantee that. So we felt it was important that we were upfront about that from the beginning. And it may or may not be a teacher from their home school. I'm not sure if that was your question. But what we will do is pull students from, let's say, second graders from multiple K-4 schools. And they would all be part of a virtual class taught by an LPS teacher, but it may not be from their home school at the high school level, so that we may offer the wide range of classes that we do. It may be that there are enough students in a particular content area or core area that we could have a full-time virtual teacher for all of those classes. But it also may be that we have a smaller number of students with just enough for one class, like let's say AP Physics, where in that particular case, you may have a teacher who is interested in taking one of their hours as a virtual class. And so those students would follow along on the same pace, but those students would be part of a virtual class for that teacher, and the remainder would be in-person. And so a lot of this will be dependent upon how many students enroll in the classes which they choose. So I hope that helps answer some of that. And then again, we will certainly be putting out more detailed information, both for our families and for our staff on this option.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Other questions? Mrs. Burton.
Thank you for being patient. My computer was not, I'm muting me quickly enough. Likewise, I'd like to thank everybody who has been involved in this, literally the hundreds of people who have worked to put these plans together. While there's not any one perfect plan, I think that the district has done an admirable job presenting two options to families. And I'd like to just point out, we've, I've been approached by a lot of parents over the last few weeks. The vast majority have wanted their children back in school, and then some who are very, feel very, very strongly that they want a virtual option for their child. So I am very thrilled that we are able to offer both. I'm glad that we got the guidance from the state of Michigan in developing our plans. I think it was very helpful also and very interesting that the American Association of Pediatrics and the CDC are both also coming out with recommendations saying that, to the extent possible, that we try to get our children back into school. I think it's crucial, not just educationally. I mean, we know educationally, they learn best in school, usually, the vast majority of children. But looking at the whole child, looking at the social-emotional, looking at relationships with peers, looking at just interacting with other folks outside their own household, I think it's healthier in the majority of the time, the majority of the cases, to have our children go back to school if we can do so safely. And I'm as comfortable as I can be with the safety protocols that we're, that we're putting in place right now, that we can do that as safely as we can do other things that we are finding ourselves at the point that we need to engage. We need to, as adults, engage different areas of our lives again, but we need to do it perhaps differently than we did it last spring or last winter. So I'm thrilled that we're able to offer these options for our students. I have a couple of questions. For secondary, what will the remote time look like? I'm not this sure if this is a question for Mr. Rollenberg or Mrs. O'Brien, but what is our second, what is our remote portion of the day that's gonna be required on a daily basis? What will that look like for our secondary students?
So I can answer that. So we spent some time in our secondary group talking about what that would look like. So being asynchronous, it would be posting some type of an instructional video or something to read. So something that's aligned to our curriculum with an assignment for students to do. So it wouldn't be a full 60 minutes of watching something online, but watching a short, you know, information. It could be, you know, a number talk that has to do with mathematics. It could be a video that teachers create that gives students additional information. The Remote Learning Subcommittee has really focused on thinking about it from a flipped classroom model, where it could be some pre-learning students do to prepare them for when they're in-person. So the schedule of the, what the hour for students to do would be, you know, we've talked about first hour on Mondays, second hour on Tuesdays, so students have one additional. But we've also talked about that maybe possibly it would be mathematics on a given day, electives on a given day. So some of the specificity of that hour of remote learning isn't there yet, but part of that will come with professional development, how to build on to that.
Okay. Thank you. And you answered my second question right in there, so I appreciate that. As far as elementary, I know at one point there was discussion about having art moving into the classrooms. And I see on the recommended plan, art is still going to be in the art room. Would someone like to address that and why that decision was made?
I don't mind taking that. I wanted to, first of all, apologize to all of you. I've been receiving some text messages that say I'm a little too fidgety on the screen. Apparently, the family's always watching you, YouTube viewers out there as well. So thinking about specials, we were also thinking about staff and students when that change was made. So we have built in a 10-minute cleaning protocol between each special in our proposed elementary schedule. And we feel confident that especially our teachers and adults will be able to clean those surfaces and high-touch areas in that time between specials. We also want to be able to have our students be able to leave their classroom at different times during the day. And this gives them an opportunity to visit other parts of the building as well. And quite honestly, it gives our teachers time to have their room, so they can clean their room. They can get their new next lessons out, and they can have some of that time. So it was a win-win-win across the board, we felt, when looking at how we could revise the daily schedule, have that cleaning piece in there. And again, that will, that will require a little adjustment to the daily schedule, but we're confident within those minutes, we're gonna be able to execute that. And I think it's good for all stakeholders.
Okay. And then, Mr. Green, you touched on in there, and it was one of my other questions on my list, as far as who's doing the disinfecting. Did I hear correctly that you're saying that that would be done by adults or by secondary students? Is that correct in this plan overall?
So it'll be adults, but I'll let Mr. France take that question.
Okay.
Well, now it sounds silly, because all I'm gonna say is it's gonna be adults, which is what Mr. Green just said. But yeah, yes, it would be the adults following the Michigan roadmap. It does specifically state staff would be wiping down the, anytime you have a change of a cohort. We have removed the concern that some had with the splashback of a cleaner being sprayed from a bottle. So we'd like to actually bring in the large tubs of disinfectant wipes for each classroom, so they can simply pull a wipe and wipe down some of those tables and desks.
Okay, okay. Let me see here. Is there going to be any parent training on Google Classroom? Let's jump into that one.
That would, that would be part of our, you know, at our curriculum nights, we explain our open houses at secondary school. We explain, you know, what's going to happen in each course. So we would want to provide training videos for parents, so they know what's expected of their students, and they know where to access the learning and where, and how to access turning in assignments this year. So that would be a part of that beginning school, you know, information for our parents.
Okay. So would we, would that be available right away at the beginning of school? Or would they need to wait for Curriculum Night? Because sometimes Curriculum Night is two or three weeks into the year.
It is our plan to have it done at the beginning of the school year, maybe reviewed at Curriculum Night as a part of each one of, you know, a teacher's presentation to let them know that it's there and maybe their own specific classroom, so parents see that teacher's classroom.
Okay. Okay, thank you. For secondary, I know I have heard about it discussed as in part of the, one of the committees, but can you, can somebody address restroom use at the secondary level? Because I know we're not, we are encouraging our students not to utilize the restrooms during passing time.
I'll take that. One of the recommendations is with the secondary level being, you know, changing classes, and there's only, there's only gonna be the two main passing times between one, two, and then again with, between two and three. However, we are not going to be closing down or locking down bathrooms, et cetera, but it's gonna be a conversation encouraging students to use the restroom and encouraging teachers to allow students to use the restroom throughout the day as needed, as opposed to, again, having large amounts of students gathering between those passing times as best as possible. Again, I want to make clear that nobody's gonna bar the door and say, during passing time, you're not allowed to use the restroom. We're just gonna try to say, you know, reasonable person, here's the idea. Let's try to use it throughout the day. You're in a block-scheduled class. It's a 100-minute class. If you have to use restroom, ask the teacher and we're going to ask teachers, please allow students to go, just to spread that out through the day.
Okay. Has there been any talk about the, about us, whether or not we're going to be offering a seventh hour? As we have been the last few years in order to allow some of our students to get some of their required courses in if they have, or their, yeah, required courses in if they have several electives that they're interested in also.
Yes, we have, and we have looked at a model so that we can continue to offer that to our students.
Okay. I assume we'll just get details on that later and that's sufficient, as long as folks know that it will be an option.
Yes. And I know Mr. McDonald, who could not be with us this evening, has worked on that item and had, has worked that into the schedule. Mr. Francis, I don't know if you want to jump in on that? That was a question that had, had come up from our staff and was certainly something that we know is, is an important option for at least a limited number of our students. And so they, they were able to work through a plan to be able to offer that. But we could certainly share more information with you on that in your packet this week.
We, we, we do have a couple of things that weren't mentioned. I mean, we just saw a sample high school and a sample middle school. But keep in mind, we have worked out schedules for a seventh hour at the high school. We've also worked out a schedule for the Livonia Career Technical Center. All of this is based upon, of course, the main high school schedules. So they're, they're there, they are. We do have them sketched out with, with time, you know, start times, end times. A lot of the, the pieces with LCTC, of course, has to do with transportation, but it is there. We just didn't want to inundate tonight's presentation with multiple, multiple schedules.
Okay. Just in case some, some folks missed this, I didn't want anyone to think that with, with teachers teaching six periods, that they are no longer going to have a prep period. I just wanted to make that clear. I think those of us who have looked at these, some of these plans for a long time understand it, but, that prep time is now built into the beginning of the day or the end of the day, based on the grade level that they're teaching. And it is not removed from them. So I just wanted to make sure that folks understood that clearly. With transportation, are we encouraging more of our parents to drive in order to reduce numbers of students on the bus?
We, yeah, we are, we have the capacity. I don't think that we are going to discourage anyone from using the bus, but I do know that, there has been, I believe through past surveys, that, that parents have said they are more than happy to drive their, their children to, which would also thin out those numbers. The committee that, that Mrs. Jenkins and I co-chaired, we did not do the transportation directly. That was a different group, but our folks did talk about transportation and arrivals and dismissals. And we didn't, we didn't have any, I, any discussions about active discouraging or active encouraging of driving. But certainly we have the capacity on the buses. We will have windows open as appropriate on the buses, the hand sanitizer, the masks. But I do know that there's been quite a bit of discussion that there are many parents that are going to drive their own students, which would thin out those numbers.
Okay. As far as the date that parents need to get their response back into the school district, did I hear you say correctly that that's August 4th? They would need to let the district know whether or not they're planning on going with the virtual option or the in-class option?
The commitment form will be available to them on August 4th. We're asking for them to return it by August 10th. That will allow us that week to begin the process of determining enrollment and scheduling needs.
Okay, great. And are we looking for a response back from all of our parents or only if they're choosing the virtual option?
Only if they're choosing that option.
Got it. Okay. Okay. I would just like to, to give a thanks to the group in, that was studying the block scheduling and the timing, for deciding to flip the high school to the later time period. We have, over the years, we've had a number of times that various people in the district have asked us to make that switch. That, that the older teens just seem to learn better if they can start later in the day. So this is one of those opportunities that we took. If we're going to make a change, let's solve two problems, not just one. So I know that Mr. Sherburne and his group at Stevenson High School have been one of the groups that have been advocating for this for quite a long time. So just wanted to give a thanks for being creative and solving two problems with one, with one solution here. And hopefully that'll work out well for our high schoolers. The other thing I'd just like to do is to encourage any parents who have elementary school children, if they've not been practicing wearing a mask yet, to begin doing that with their students. Most of the middle school on up students have, have had enough exposure out in, in the world, outside of their own home at this point, that they've had to utilize masks. But some of our elementary schoolers have done that and some have not. But certainly if that's going to be part of life at school, I'd like to encourage you to, whether it's at home or out, have, have some, either wear the masks when you're out in public with your child or have the child be wearing masks at home for a while. If you're not comfortable with the child going out to the store or what have you, but, but do take some time. So your little one gets used to wearing a mask, because that just is going to be part of life for the next, the period of time anyway. That's all of my questions. Thank you very much. And thanks again to the enormous number of people that, that put a lot of hours of work into this plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Before I go back to Mrs. Jarvis, let's see if either Mrs. Frank or Mrs. Bradford have any questions. Would like Mrs. Frank had her hand up?
I'm waiting patiently.
Looks like she's saying, go ahead.
Why, thank you, President Johnson. I echo the sentiments of my other fellow board members. I do want to thank everybody who have worked tirelessly on these plans. And quite frankly, it's so difficult to even try to, to put something together, because it seems like every day, something changes. And we have to be extremely flexible. So we're in a real tight spot here. This affects everybody. Our children, first and foremost, are affected. Our staff is affected. Our parents' schedules are affected. This pandemic is so unfortunate that we have to be put in these difficult positions of trying to, to make plans for, for our students. I am very thankful that Livonia is offering options, because I believe that everybody is in a different spot or position. And it's a personal decision on whether or not you want to send your child back for face-to-face schooling, or you feel more comfortable, given your situation, that your child should do all virtual. So for that, I am, I'm grateful, because that opens up choices and options. And, and you're correct, both options will have challenges. We know this. I just want to make sure our, our parents know that it's your personal decision. Neither option is right. It's just going to be your option to decide what you feel is best. And I think it's wonderful that you might be able to switch at a semester or a trimester if room permits. But I think we all have to remember here to be flexible and realize that this is just a, a very, very difficult situation for everybody involved. It's, it's not an easy process and it has tons of questions, tons of uncertainties, and we all have to get through this somehow together. So I appreciate so many people tuning in to listen to our meetings and being informed at what's going on. But I, it's difficult because it can turn on a dime. So every day we wake up and say, what's going to happen today? But I think if we put on a, put on our game face, work hard every day to do the best that we can for our students and do it as safely as we can. Safety has to be a really, that's on, on our minds of, of all, for everybody involved. I do have a question about the in-school and the face masks. And I, my question is about if a, if a student prefers to wear a face shield, is, is, that's something, the shield, I think in the lower grades allows a little more opportunity for our staff members to see our little ones and be able to smile and, you know, feel maybe less inhibited. Is that something that a, a family might have an option as to choose instead of a face mask to wear a shield? Or if they do choose a shield, would they also have to have a face mask under it? I guess that's my question first.
Yes, they may choose a shield. So we're trying to be very deliberate in using the term face coverings, because they may choose a face shield or a face mask.
Great. And somebody had a great idea on the face shields of, you know, putting the child's name using a dry erase marker or something, to show that by the end of the day or the next day, it's clean, that you've cleaned it. And just different opportunities I thought were neat about a face shield versus a face mask in those lower grades. That could be part of a learning lesson, that every day you would come and you'd mark the shield, it'd have your name on it, but you could show that you've cleaned it properly and everything and you'd start over every day. But I guess that's a very big detail. But anyways, my other question is, the health guidelines, I think that's on the mind, minds of everybody, is the health and safety. And I know parents may be disappointed tonight to not have, they're going to have several, several questions about, what happens if we have a case at our buildings? What's going to be the guidelines? And I'm, I know you said Wednesday, we're supposed to hear from Wayne County, and I'm nervous about that, because, how confident are we that Wayne County is going to come out with that plan? Because if we're asking our parents to choose a plan between August 4th and 10th, I think that's really going to make or break a decision on whether you want to send your child all virtual or face, back face-to-face. And those are like just probably the most important questions that we need to ask. Are, will there be, like you said, a sick room or a sick area and how will that all be taken care of? So that makes me a little bit nervous that we're relying on Wayne County to get the guidelines out. So I just hope that they, they do that in a, in a, coming up here quickly.
Address that briefly, and I certainly know, and I can't tell you how much we wish that we had those in our hands for this evening. That would certainly have been a significant element that we would have shared with, with families and with our staff tonight. And so we would certainly take a look at whether or not we needed to extend that timeline. If, for instance, we don't have that information this week and we can't get it out to folks. If, if it sounds like that is an important element in their decision-making, we could certainly look at a, a short extension to the timeline. We really have, really looked at a backward design of, of what kind of time we would need to have in order to plan appropriately for this model. So we, we probably can't go too much further out, but we could certainly take a look at extending that. It will be on my list again tomorrow morning. I know Dr. Ter, between Dr. Terrell and I, we're in pretty regular contact with either Wayne Risa or the Health Department directly. And so we will inquire again about those guidelines and then get out information. And I wanted to mention, just to reiterate, a couple of you had talked about, I know Mrs. Burton and you, Mrs. Bradford, about really beginning to practice wearing, whether it's the face shields or face coverings. And we would certainly concur with that. And I know Dr. Terrell's team will be getting out some informational videos that we are hopeful will be helpful to families, with some suggestions about how to do that and, and in what way that might be most helpful. We also believe that that's a really essential part of our Safe Start September Plan. We know that that will be a new experience for our students and for our staff for that extended period of time. And we truly believe that that was an essential element to that, that re-entry back into school, but that acclimation to those, those new processes. So I think anything we can do between now and then will be helpful, but certainly that's something we're, we're also hoping that first few weeks will allow.
Thank you. Oh, I still have another question, but go ahead.
I just want to respond to your, to answer one of your questions. And I believe one of our community members had, had a very similar question or comment in the beginning of this meeting that Mrs. Jenkins read, and it's regarding having a, a separate room. All, all of our schools have clinics, but our, our subgroup had a breakout team that focused on six students. And, and their recommendation is to have a, a separate room from the clinic in each building. And each building is unique, and each building will have to find and designate, because all those spaces are a little bit different and they're used a little bit differently. But to, to designate, not a sick room, but, but actually a wellness room. We don't want it to be this, this shameful area that, that children who may not be feeling well go to. So that is something that has been discussed. It is in the recommendation. So to answer your topic as well as the, the community member's topic from earlier, that, that is on our radar and it is a recommendation from our, from our team.
Thank you. In addition to that, and I, and I'm sure this will be addressed as, as students enter the buildings, will there be any type of medical check, like temperatures taken with those, you know, the forehead? Or will they be washing their hands? I guess that's going into the building at the beginning of the day? Or is that something that we just need to wait for on the guidelines from Wayne County?
So I will tell you that initially the safe, the screening protocol for students is that that is a, a home-based protocol that has a very specific process that parents can access either by paper or online. We are exploring whether or not we want to go further with those recommendations. So we are awaiting their final guidance, but it is something that we have discussed about whether or not that would be feasible for us to do. And if so, how we would do that. And so that particular protocol, I will tell you, the initial guidance is that the screening protocol for students would be at home and its staff would be self-administered at school or at their officer department. However, that is something that we discussed with our administrative team last week, with regard to the feasibility of also doing that screening at school. So again, once we receive that, we will definitely get more information out to you on that.
Okay, thank you. And one other thing, can you talk about what types of PD programs or PD you're going to be doing for staff? I mean, now we're getting into August and I know they're going to need some PD development. Is there, can, do you have that going or how, how will that look?
So it is our plan to offer teachers a variety of asynchronous PD, so that they can access it on their own from home. So the aspects of Google Classroom that we would expect them to be providing to their students. So give them some of that PD. Best practices, we did a survey of what teachers felt like their needs were for professional development going into this year. And the number one thing was what are best practices for online teaching? So have reached out to a, a couple of people and actually a university of a module-based, again, asynchronous learning, of walking teachers through what best practices would be. Professional development on block scheduling for our high school teachers, like what, how, how to expand what you currently do and take advantage of having your students in front of you for a longer period of time. And then working with Dr. Terrell, providing professional development on meeting the needs of our students, social emotional needs this year, knowing that they haven't been to school in the past six months. So we have a lot on the plate in addition to their building PD when they come back, which will walk them through a lot of the new protocols. But I think that Safe Start September also gives us time for teachers to continue to collaborate about their curriculum and focusing it and building what's expected in those Google classrooms together, so that teachers are in this together, helping each other with that.
Thank you. I, I do appreciate that Safe Start September. I think that's a great idea. And kudos to the groups that decided that would be something that would be a great thing to do. I, I do like that. I'm sorry, I have one more question that I was thinking about. In the all-virtual, what type of technology or devices, will our students be given devices or is this a question that we still haven't had? Or is this a question that we still haven't had answered? If you go all virtual, will a student be able to use their own device if they have it? Or would the district provide them a device?
Yes, we are required. If they choose the 100% virtual option, we are required to make one available to them. So we know that many students do have their own, I mean, would be able to utilize that. If they do not, then yes, we would be required to make that available to them.
Thank you. And I think that's about it. I'm sure I have a million other questions, but I could go on and on. But I do want to just thank everybody for all their hard work. This is going to be a very, another challenging year. I think though that if we work collectively, and I think we, in our community, and we rely on our, everybody to do their part, from our students, our parents, our staff, we can do this. It's, you know what, we're going to get through this. Just remember to be flexible. It's difficult to say that because it's such a scary time we're in. But let's do our best to get through this together. And I appreciate everybody's hard work.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you so much, President Johnson. I just wanted to also echo everyone's hard work on this. The just the hours that have spent into this, I so appreciate it. And I also wanted to express my appreciation for everyone who reached out. There are so, such high anxiety levels at this time with so many of our parents, our staff, our kids, of what is it going to look like next year? And please know, we hear all of those voices. We have heard you, we understand your concerns. We are trying to navigate this the best that we can in terms of, this is an unprecedented time where we have never walked through this before. We are trying to hear all those voices and take into consideration every voice and make this the safest possible reentry that we can into school. So I think that 100% in classroom with no pandemic is really the answer, but that's not the option that we have right now. And I think that one of the other things to be flexible, we're going to have to be nimble this year as we navigate this, as cases go up and down, as things change, as they have all, as they have changed in the past, we're going to have to be nimble. We also can be kind one to another. We've heard from a lot of passionate people about this, and I understand the passion, but this is also a lot of, a time to give a lot of grace as we navigate this new normal. I have a couple of questions for the staff. I appreciate how much this is costing the staff to come back to school, to be in school full-time. And I understand that you all are losing sleep. You're nervous about what this is going to look like. And some of you have said you're going to quarantine in your basement so that you're not affecting other people in your family if they're choosing the virtual option. So we hear that and we are weighing those options as well. I think one of the things that I wanted to talk about was the virtual classroom. And I understand for our specific programs, it's very difficult to offer a virtual class. Is there any way, if there is a high number of parents that request it for A-CAT or May-CAT or one of those programs that are very niche program, I understand, and we have a smaller population, so I understand that that's a smaller population to pull from. But if there is a large percentage of that population that is looking for an online class, is there, is that, is there flexibility within that? Or are we for sure not planning to offer any of that?
You know, we would, we would love to be able to do that, but I will be very honest with you. This is a significant undertaking to follow and plan for our regular curriculum for 13 grade levels and all of the different courses that are available at the secondary. And it will take, really at this point, all of our resources to be able to offer this, kindergarten through 12th grade and where applicable post-secondary. We did take a look at that, but we, we don't want to overreach. We want this to be a quality program. We certainly, those students can certainly choose to be part of that virtual program. But for us to be able to recreate across, for instance, all of the grade levels, if you think about A-CAT, that would be grades one through six and all of the content areas within that. So if it were one grade level, that may be possible, or one core area. But it would be difficult to do that across each of our specialty programs, whether that's MSA or TAPA or A-CAT or NIGIiro. We, it's at the point of pride that we offer those programs, and yet that is one of the challenges that exists with offering them on virtual. So I will tell you at this point in time that I don't want to give you a false indication. We would love to be able to do that. But we believe right now it's going to take all of our efforts to provide the high-quality rigor and expectation that we know parents and students and staff will have in the virtual program that we're planning. And so we did not feel we have the resources or the staff to be able to do that for each of our major programs.
Okay, thank you for that. The other question I has had is, I think at one point, or I'll just ask the question, are we going to transport kids on the half-day? Did you cover that, on the half-day, the Safe Start September?
Yes.
We may not have covered it, so thank you for asking, and yes, we are.
Sorry. Okay.
And that's part of the reason why to do that at both levels. It allows us to continue with our four-tier system. When we are on different levels and when we have some half-day, some not, and as you know, we run a four-tiered system for every level, it makes it very difficult when we're not on similar schedules. And so yes, we will be able to do that because we're using the same, the same half-day plan.
Okay, perfect. And I know that substitutes will be a big issue as, as I think for kids too, they will miss more days of school. And I think that this was addressed in one of our meetings or one of the subcommittees that we are going to do a more consistent job of updating Google Classroom every day if a student has to be, if they're on, if they're not on the online option, they're in person, but they have to be quarantined for 14 days. They will be able to keep up with their classroom via Google Classroom. Is that correct?
That was, that was something we talked about in our subcommittee as a way of providing kids that one launching spot, especially if they'd be out for long periods of time. I don't think we fleshed that out with all of our grade levels and all of our groups. It was part of our secondary group conversation.
Okay. But we have taken a look also at our subs in case we have teachers that need to be out, that sort of thing. There is a plan in place for how, how to provide quality education, even if the teachers are out, as they will probably be out for longer. As we know, so many of our staff teach us now while they're sick, or if they have a sore throat, they still come to work, but they will not be able to in the future. So I just wanted to make sure that we do have a plan in place for that.
So there are a couple of different things we're looking at, Mrs. Frank. And it's certainly a concern, I think, that exists in our district and really every district. We have been in close contact, our HR department, with a staff who is our provider for our third-party subs, who has in turn been in contact with each and every one of our substitute teachers that we have used previously and have indicated a 90% planned return rate for those guest teachers. We are planning to increase our number of premium subs. And the premium subs are subs that we guarantee work for them each day, and we do pay a premium to have those subs onboard. So we're going to increase the number of premium subs that we have available within the district. One thing we're doing on the district's part is we're eliminating all daytime time bank use. So where we would normally pull groups of teachers out during the day and utilize substitute teachers for that, we will not be doing that minimally for the first semester, and if needed, we'll extend that. But we will not be utilizing time bank sub-days. So all of those days that would have normally gone to covering teachers while they were servicing the district or servicing their school through time bank, those will not be utilized at all during the first semester. And again, we'll reevaluate if we need to continue that. In addition to that, we were looking at a number of different pieces. It's certainly something that was brought up within not only, I believe, two of our different subgroups, but we've also had that dialogue with some of our staff leadership as well. So that's high on our priority list, and we'll be continuing to. Those are just some of the ways we're going to try to tackle that from many fronts.
Okay, thank you. Again, the other thing that I just wanted to say is I think that our online learning, we learned a lot from the spring. And so any piece of, not just the virtual, the kid, the students that choose virtual, but the remote that's happening for full in-person kids, that is going to be, we're going to make it more enriching and more value-added to the students. So I think that parents can rest assured that those hours that they are going to be spent, those minutes of their classroom day that they're not in the classroom will be value-added to them and that it will be something that's not just busy work that they're completing, but it will be value-added to their education in some form or another in terms of how they utilize that time. And I'm thankful that they can do it anytime, that it's not just that 1:55 to 2:15 or one half, whatever that timeframe is, that they are able to do that at their convenience, depending on their, the family's schedule. So there are so many dynamics going on right now. We have so many families that have different dynamics going on right now. And I think that this is a time that is hard. And I just don't want to dismiss that, that this is hard for everyone. It's hard for parents, it's hard for staff. And we are navigating it, again, the best that we can. But I wanted to thank everyone for being engaged in this. And please feel free to reach out. I think Mrs. Oakwood is going to give lots of options for communicating and letting us know. I know several people said it's probably a done deal. It is not a done deal. This is the recommendation, but it's not a done deal. We are still, we don't vote until next Monday night. And so for those that are wanting to provide feedback, there will be an opportunity to provide feedback. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Mr. Centers, you had another question.
I'm also, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Johnson. So my concerns are about start times. Firstly, swapping the high school and the middle school swap times. This addresses some recent studies regarding the way teens learn best and what their sleep needs are. That's something that the board had been discussing for a while. So it's nice that we can at least find some kind of resolution about that. If there had to be a silver lining, that could well be it. As far as elementary goes, I don't think I heard what the daytime schedule is going to be for elementary for K through six. Also, A-CAT and May-CAT. So they used to both go and match the middle school schedule and take the bus together. Does this mean that A-CAT students are going to be starting their day very, very early? Or is there going to be a different kind of busing structure for the A-CAT students?
I don't mind taking that question. So I'll give you some times, and we are talking K-4 right now. The student's start time would be 9:10 a.m., that's as proposed. And the dismissal would be at 3:25 p.m. So those of you that attended Livonia Public Schools back in the day, that might sound similar to maybe those start and end times back in the old days. For our 5-6, our start time would be 8:35 a.m. And our teacher end day would be 3:42 p.m. And for the bell schedule for Webster A-CAT, yes, indeed, it would be an earlier start. They would start at 7:40 a.m., and they, their day would end at 1:25 p.m. So Webster A-CAT and NIGIiro are going to have a little bit of a different schedule, and we're working on those schedules as we speak. I'm in contact with Mr. DeLuca, Ms. Boca. They have been huge advocates for both programs. And so I hope that gives a little more clarity on the daily schedules for our start and end times. And I do want to make sure I send a special shout-out to our NIGIiro community because as I mentioned, I don't want it to be lost in the presentation. They're going to be starting with remote learning on August 13th. And we appreciate their flexibility. As you heard, we're waiting on some of those health protocols. So we're going to learn a lot from our NIGIiro community too these first few weeks of school.
Does that take care of your questions, Mrs. Jarvis? Okay, Mrs. Burton.
Mr. Green, you mentioned teacher start and end time. Can you give us our, or confirm if it's student start and end time?
Yes, those were student start and end times that I gave. 9:10 a.m. for K-4 and student dismissal at 3:25 and such, yes.
Okay, and then 5-6 is 8:35 to 3:42?
Correct, 8:35 to, excuse me, 2:50. If I said 3:42, I apologize.
Okay, that's what got thrown, okay. I'm sorry, 2:42 you said?
The student's start time at 5-6, the learning day begins at 8:35 and ends at 2:50. My apologies.
2:50, okay. And then, I'm sorry, for a review, the 7-8 and the 9-12, the start and end times for those students? That might be with Mr. Rollenborg.
Hold on, I got it. Yeah, yep, 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 yep. These were, these were samples. I mean, all of this is, like, for example, high school, we had the student's start time at, the sample high school was 8:10 and dismissal at 1:55. But as, as usual, that would be, what we currently do now is Churchill is five minutes later than Franklin and Stevenson. That would still continue in this, in this model, and that's mostly for a transportation reason. And then middle school, the sample we had up was 7:35 would be the start time for students in class, and dismissal would be 1:20 p.m.
Okay, okay, thank you. I did have one other question. Mr. Frank, you're probably the one to address this also. The ventilation and HVAC recommendations from State of Michigan. Where, what are those, and have we already taken care of them?
Well, thanks to the 2013 bond and the support of the community, all of our school buildings have been brought up to the modern code in the HVAC systems. We actually had a conversation in our, in our subgroup talking about how the air that is being brought, we have fresh air coming into our system, and it is turned over in a room several times throughout the day. So we are, we have reports, the commissioning reports for all of our buildings. Mr. Law and I were going through those last week. And what we have is fresh air entering, filtered, circulated into the classroom, and then the old air being circulated out of the building. So again, we are turning over the air in our classrooms repeatedly throughout the day. So we are in very good shape. And on top of that, we have CO2 sensors that were put in during the renovations because essentially, when there's no one in a room, you don't need to bring in the fresh air as quickly. And then we have it set for a certain level of carbon dioxide that triggers it to turn on. We've discussed lowering even that threshold so it will, it will trigger and run more often, thus even bringing in and turning over the air at a more rapid pace when the buildings are occupied.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Thank you. I just want to say, and I think we all express this, that this is super, super frustrating and very difficult for our families. We know that there's a lot of stress and there's a lot of information out there that we want and we need and isn't always available right when we want it. That, that's not lost on us, and we know and understand as, as many of us are parents ourselves on how that affects our families and our timing. And we ask that everyone be patient. I think if we put out initial plans that aren't fully fleshed out, there's a lot of questions. When we do put out our plans, as we always do at Livonia Public Schools, once they're finalized, well, finalized as much as we can, then we provide the information. And there are still a lot of questions that people have. But my point to this is, Mrs. Oakwood, or if someone can tell, tell, address our viewers, where is the most up-to-date? I know in this day and age of, you know, tweets and Facebooks and all that stuff, that there is a certain expectation that all of this information is pushed, 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 pushed. But we can only push so much before people stop reading our stuff. So I think, you know, we try and push stuff on a limited basis when it's feasible and the most important times. So in between those times, where can we go to look? What, what's my button on the, on the front of our webpage? Or where am I going to go if I want to know? You know, did Wayne County come up with, you know, the information for the protocols for reporting and dealing with, you know, verified cases of COVID? Where am I going to go to be able to say, okay, Wayne County put it out? Yes or no, and things like that? So I can get the very last up-to-minute, up-to-the-minute information, and I don't have to wait for it to pop up on my tweet or my Facebook feed. or my Facebook feed.
So we do have a dedicated portal on the front page of our website with our Return to Learn logo. And so if you click on that logo, it's a dedicated page on our site that will continue to be updated as we receive more information. This presentation will be put up there tomorrow and will be available. And then we'll continue to put any, any FAQs or any updated information that will continue to grow on that page as we have more information for our families. We will also, for important topics like that, and as we create those documents based on these questions that we've received this evening and based on questions that we'll receive throughout this week, we will work on a detailed FAQ to go out to our families. We will push that out. We will also put that on our site and make it accessible on the Return to Learn page on our website. But if someone wanted to go back and take a look at a certain element of this presentation, we'll be putting that up on the site tomorrow, so that will be available. We will also be emailing it out to every community member and every staff member, along with an opportunity to provide feedback, ask questions, give, give their input that we will also share, not only with the Board of Education, but with our district administrative team.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest. Mrs. Frank, did you have a last question? No? Okay.
No, I just wanted to say, oh, sorry, President Johnson, I did want to say, I don't know if you can see that, but it really does, it pops right up on your screen. I was at several different districts today just to see what they're doing and what their plans are and looking at different districts. And it's very hard to see and find exactly where, where their return to school is. And this, as soon as you type in Livonia Public Schools, it pops up and you cannot miss it. So I think that any parent wanting to find that information is very easy to do. And I don't, it's not buried in the website at all. So I think that's, that's great. Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Any other questions from my colleagues? Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest and the Cabinet for that very comprehensive presentation. Thank you to my colleagues for their very well thought out questions. I'm sure there are going to be more questions in the days to come before this comes to our regular meeting for a vote on the third. So thank you. And we do have another full agenda that we have to press on to this evening. So as long as there are no other questions, we'll move on to Item B, which is suspension of board policies that impede the safety of students and staff. And we'll turn to Mrs. Oakwest.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I didn't know if the, if the group needed a quick five-minute break before we move on to that, that item. I think they were looking for maybe perhaps just a, a five-minute break, and then we'll be right back on screen. Would that be all right with you?
Given the number of items that we have tonight, we may have multiple.
Yes, we, we still have a number of items on this meeting, and then we have two more meetings to go tonight. So everybody hang in there. We can do it.
We can do it. Okay, thank you. We'll be back in about five.
Thank you. This was the one you talked to Brad Bonanzic about, or do you want me to address it?
I'm happy to address it. Not a problem at all.
And this has got about a 25-second delay on what we're, what we're doing. If you watch it on YouTube, it's about 25 seconds behind.
Okay, we are back. Thank you for indulging us in a little R and R there. So we will move on to Item B, our suspension of board policies that impede the safety of students and staff. And Mrs. Oakwest?
Thank you, President Johnson. I believe our policy chair, Mrs. Burton, is going to speak to this policy as we've had guidance from Brad Bonanzic from M A S B in its regard to temporary suspension of board policies that would impede us creating a safe environment during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Superintendent Oakwest. Yes, we did, we were talking about this within the last couple of months and realized there may be, peppered throughout our 600 pages of policies, policies here or there, that we may need to modify their implementation over this next period of months in order to comply with, with safety measures that are recommended or required in dealing with COVID-19. We consulted with the Michigan Association of School Boards attorney, Brad Bonanzic, and he suggested that we do not need to go through all of our policies and modify them, but rather, we do need to just make a motion at our next voting meeting that we will temporarily suspend any policy or portion thereof that's necessary in order to comply with health and safety measures during the COVID-19 crisis. So that's what has been recommended, and that's what's on our next agenda for voting item.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, so this will go on for our, our regular meeting later this evening. All right, that completes then Item 2, our Committee of the Hall. It will take us to Item 3, our Finance Committee. And I'm going to turn it over at this time to Mrs. Bonnefield, our Chair.
Thank you, President Johnson. Even with the pandem, even with the pandemic and all the things that are going on, business, there's a little bit of business as usual that we have to cover. Tonight for the Finance Committee, I have one item. That item is regarding the musical instruments. And Mr. Willenborg is going to help us out with that tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Bonnefield. Yes, the, the show must go on. And tonight, I did want to bring to you a continuation of our discussion from the study session about instrumental equipment, instructional equipment purchase of specifically musical instruments. And there, you know, there has, there is a portion of the 213 bond funds remaining that has been allocated to, to complete the purchase of musical instruments at the secondary level. That's always been the plan, that there would be a second run. Ms. Herring, our music teacher leader, has done a needs assessment from the other teachers, and it was collated to, to develop a request for proposal that went out to bid. That bid process resulted in four vendor submissions, probably from Cameron Music, Hewitt Music, Taylor Music, and Washington Music. Those bids have been reviewed by Ms. Herring, Mr. Law, myself. None of the bids were for the complete package. So what we decided was to split the award along the following lines. To Cameron Music, awarding them $20,275, $20,275 of the, of the proposal. To Taylor Music, $83,840.85. And to Hewitt Music, $56,087. You know, decisions that weigh into the selection of what vendor we go with is, is based on, you know, the reliability of that, of that company, the, the service they provide on that order. And certainly, the, you know, there's, we like to deal with some local, the local relationships we have. You know, so that's how we went through, you know, including low bid, of course, but that's how we, we favored one over the other. It's a total purchase of $160,202.85. Again, those funds are provided through the 2013 bond under, under instructional equipment. And I included in your packet a list of, you know, two sheets, one showing the, the vendors and another sheet showing the instruments and which, what company we selected for which instrument. So I'm, I'd like to place this item on the agenda for our next meeting and hopefully before the evening's out.
Thank you, Mr. Willenborg. Mrs. Bradford, I see you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. I just had a comment. I was happy to see that you were able to use several vendors. And I see one of the vendors is from our local company. And I think that's really great that we were able to use some of the funding for our local vendors in the area. That's just a comment. And I'm very happy to see that we're getting new musical instruments. I, I love, I love the bands, and it's great that we're able to offer new instruments for our music program. So I'm really happy to see this.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford.
I was just saying, we're thrilled, absolutely.
Yes.
I cannot see everybody, so if anybody else, I can see President Johnson has a question.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Willenborg, the, the equipment that was bid on, is this all new equipment or is any of it refurbished?
This is all new equipment.
Okay, thank you.
It particularly helped us in this era where, you know, now there's no one in our, in our programs who will have to share instruments, particularly those big instruments, very expensive instruments. Sometimes the kids would have to share. This won't have to, that won't have to happen with this purchase.
And this purchase is still out of our 2013 bond funds, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Anybody else? Dan, I see Crystal. What else am I missing? Any, anybody else? Dan, I see Crystal. Well, is there my missing? We're all set? Okay. All right. That would be the end of the finance committee tonight, President Johnson, and we'll put that on the agenda for later, later tonight to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. That will take us to item four, our curriculum committee, and I will turn it over to our chair, Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, we're going to talk about StudySync textbooks and online licenses for ELA in grades 11 and 12, and we'll have Mrs. O'Brien take it away.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. I am happy to bring tonight a recommendation to purchase StudySync for our 11th and 12th grade ELA classes. So this is a shift. Our 11th grade classes used to be two semester-long classes, and our 12th grade classes also were a variety of elective semester-long courses. Over the past several years, our high school teachers have been working on aligning to having our students college and career-ready and increasing the rigor in our ELA programs to align with our common core state standards. When we brought to you the ELA 910 adoption for StudySync, those teachers have now been using that program and found great benefit with that. Our 11th and 12th grade committee actually started over a year ago, trying first to decide, did they want to continue on with semester-long courses or go to a year-long basis of 11th grade ELA or 12th grade ELA, and that is where they landed. And over the last year, they've looked at six different books they reviewed, piloted two. 10 teachers from our three high schools have been on this committee, and they followed the district textbook adoption process. One thing that they did not do, they didn't feel that they could do a student survey at the end of the year, so typically we do do that, but all students were using StudySync. So when we closed in March, StudySync opened up their platform. We did not have an online platform for our 11th and 12th graders. StudySync opened up theirs, and so they utilized that platform. So teachers didn't feel like that was fair to then survey after all the, all the students had had an opportunity to use that. So this adoption brings with it classroom sets of textbooks with additional online licenses so students can access the book from home. The cost is $229,446. We have $16,225.71 in free materials.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Do we have any questions from any of our board members? Mr. Centers.
Just, Mrs. O'Brien, is, what is our timeline here? And, you know, is this our professional development that will need to be done with teachers in order to implement what we told?
Yep. So, so we, when this gets approved by the board, so again, we can turn on the online licenses as soon as the purchase order goes through, and then they'll ship us the, the textbooks themselves. Mrs. Finkel has been working with the representative about providing a balance of in-person and virtual PD in order to support our teachers, because although we want them to have the ability to use this textbook, we also know there's some other things, they also need PD right at the beginning of the year. So we're gonna, we're gonna support them, but the nice thing is they all got to use the platform in the spring. So they're, they're familiar with that. Now we're just gonna expand upon that for our curriculum.
Great, thank you. Very exciting.
Any other questions or comments? I see a lot of head shaking. All right, that looks very good. We can add this to the voting agenda, Mrs. Bonnefield? Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you.
And that concludes the curriculum committee report.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. That'll take us to item five, our policy committee, and I will turn it over to our chair, Mrs. Burton.
Yes, we have a number of policies that we can probably handle in one group, because they really are all related to the same topic. I'm not sure if this is going to be Dr. Terrell taking care of this?
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you, Vice President Burton. Good evening, everyone. As stated previously at our study session on July 13th, in June 2020, the U.S. Supreme Court made a decision regarding Title VII, which is the policy that prohibits discrimination against any person on the basis of race, color, national origin, religion, height, weight, marital status, handicap, and sex. Sex has now been interpreted by the U.S. Supreme Court to include sexual orientation, sexual identity, or transgender status. Although Title VII changes do not include students, the legal guidance we have received has indicated our student discrimination policies should be reflective of the Supreme Court's ruling. In addition to the Title VII changes, Title IX regulations have also been updated as of May 2020 by the Office of Civil Rights and become effective as of August 14th, 2020. Title IX prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex in educational programs and activities that receive or benefit from federal financial assistance. Additionally, federal courts and agencies have found that Title IX prohibits sex-based harassment, including sexual harassment, sexual violence, dating and domestic violence, and stalking. The current changes include an updated definition of sexual harassment, as well as updated grievance procedures, which outline specifically the option and process for filing a complaint, as well as reporting requirements, confidentiality, and retaliation complaints. So as Vice President Burton said, we will review each policy. However, all of the changes are repeated across the policies.
Thank you. Policy G A A A. Are there any questions to the addition of the language to this policy? I am seeing none. The next policy where it appears is policy G A B is in void. Are there any questions on this policy? Seeing none, we'll go on. The next policy is G A E A. Any questions on this policy? No? All righty. The next policy that is effective is policy G A E A A. Any questions? No. The next policy is J A A. Any questions on that policy? Mrs. Frank.
We're running through these quickly because I know we're short on time, and we've got a lot of things to cover. So I don't think we need to belabor any of these points, but I just want to say that I think that we, as a district, take it very seriously, any type of harassment for any reason for any child. And I know that kids are dealing with so many things as they are growing up, pre-k through post-secondary, and each kid has a story and a struggle. And I think that we have policies on harassment is something that we need to take seriously. And if anybody questions what our bullying policies are, they are well-written and well-documented in terms of not tolerating harassment of any student. So I just, I just, even though we're going through these really quickly, I think it's a vital and very important policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Bonnefield, I want to just add to Mrs. Frank, and it's, for, it seems like there's probably a lot of, if there's still, if everybody's still on the, the call, a lot of new faces. We have already talked about this one time. We talked about it at our last study session, and we were able to ask questions and point out some changes that were made on this iteration. So it's not just, I just want everybody to know, this is not a bunch of head nodding, that we've already gone through this, the updates have been made, and we're simply reviewing what we talked about at our study session.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bonnefield. Point well taken. Any other comments on J A A or questions? Okay, whoops, my computer's going the wrong way. Hold on just a moment. The next policy is J C E D. The only suggestion I have, this is one that we, as Mrs. Bonnefield mentioned, we discussed at the, at the study session, the title personnel really probably needs to be changed to students, because this section is the student section, not the personnel section. And it, the title reads personnel discriminatory harassment of students, but it does not refer to only personnel. This is really talking about the students cannot be harassed by anyone in the district, whether they be staff, parents, invitees, guests, volunteers, et cetera. So I believe that this title should, the word personnel should be changed to students.
Thank you. I'll make that change and recommend that these policies with that change go forward for the board meeting for a first reading.
That is correct. And I believe that was the last one. Let me double check. Yes, it was. First reading in our next meeting, which is, and it's still this evening, is great. Thank you very much, Dr. Terrell.
Thank you, Vice President.
That concludes policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. That will take us to item six, our building and site committee, and I will turn it over to our chair, Mr. Centers.
Thank you. We have two items this evening. First item is approval of laptop computers and carts purchased. Mr. Francis, are you updating us on that?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We have, in your packet, you saw my memo to Mrs. Oakley, as well as the quote from CDWG. This is a, a proposed purchase for 850 laptops, not Chromebooks, not, not mobile devices in the sense like we've been used to in purchasing, but actual laptops. And I'll get to the reason for these in just a moment. But along with the 850 laptops, our 23 charging carts as well. And the total for this is $694.30. No, that would have been a really good deal if there's this, $694,310 for the carts and the, and the laptops, again from CDWG, and that is off of RMC bid pricing. So having gone through the basics of, of the items, what we have here are student laptops we're proposing to purchase. We have multiple classes in our, in our secondary schools that require laptops or desktops, because they, those courses run software, specific software programs. So the vast, vast majority of things that we do in our classrooms, regardless of grade level, are cloud-based items, things like just using Google Classroom, the whole Google Drive. Other, other items can all be cloud-based, and many, many, many are cloud-based. Therefore, you can use an item like a Chromebook, like we do across the district. However, some of these specialized, specialized courses, as an example, some of our PLTWR project lead the way courses, like Computer Science Principles, Engineering Essentials, some of our LCTC courses, other classes at the three high schools, like yearbook, or photo and advanced photo, managing money, the marketing classes, these run very specific, again, software that needs to be on a desktop or a laptop. And for years, those classes have been in one of the labs, and they run them in the labs, and they continue to do so. However, at, at one point early in the 1920s school year, we started having discussions, Mr. Klan had come to Mr. Willenborg and myself and said, you know, I've got an idea. You know, we have these labs, it's difficult to load multiple software packages in multiple labs. What if we got some laptops for student use for these courses, so they could be, really be run in any classroom? You wouldn't need to have this physical space that needed to be, you know, signed out, et cetera. So, you know, talking through those ideas, it was a great idea, et cetera. But then, of course, we ran into the pandemic and all of the, the things that we've, you know, been, been concerned with over the, the past half a year. And really, the conversation turned from the, the idea that having these carts for different labs that are to, to be able to run these courses, different classes, turned into, what if we're virtual? What do these students do if we have to go all virtual? So it really is a, a double, double win on this with regard to making sure that these specific courses can continue to run if we have virtual, as well as also when we're back into the normal, you know, normalcy that we're used to, can also be continued to be used by these classes. So we actually have 2013 bond money that we can use for this 694310 that will cover, cover this purchase. We are bringing it up at this meeting and asking that it be voted on in the meeting following this, this evening, because there are supply chain issues that I think we all are aware of with regard to electronics. We've actually been told by CDWG that G stands for government, it's CDW, but the G just stands for government purchases. They had informed our IT department when we asked for the quote, they said it's about six to eight weeks for lead time if they get the PO right away. And we said, what if we got to, you know, on the 28th of July, if the board approves it? And they said, we will hold, you're, you're good customers, you've done a lot, we will hold this and be ready for you. If we wait longer, we were very concerned about it being much deeper into the school year before we would be able to actually receive this item. So that's pretty much the majority of the background on it. I'm willing to take questions if you have them, but it's our recommendation for the two tiers of both traditional in-building use, but also if we have to go fully virtual, continuation of all of these secondary courses for these students.
Any questions, comments? Mrs. Bradford?
Thank you, Mr. Centers. I have a question. I see that in the quote, it includes accidental damage insurance. Will these, will these laptops, the beauty of them is that they can be mobile and taken other, the students can take them. What, what does that mean, and how does that look? If a student takes one home, what happens if one gets damaged, or how, how do we deal with that, those types of problems? Because I think that's going to be coming up. It's our reality now, so.
Yeah, really, really smart question, and, and pretty much no questions asked. It's, that's the point of that. You know, they know what we're using it for, we know what we're using it for. So that's the beauty of, of that type of warranty on that.
And that would be covered if something happened to it?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
If they use them for goalposts in the middle of the street, perhaps, or something like that, yeah.
Let's hope not. Thank you.
Kidding aside, yes, you're correct in how you described it.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yep, yep. And I just got a, I got, just to follow up, my, my phone started buzzing from Mr. Klan, because he's clearly paying attention to the meeting, and he also nodded in, complete replacement, any damage, no, no matter what.
Um, Mr. Francis, I just, I know I talked about remote versus virtual in light of our lengthy conversation earlier. I don't want it to get confused, because you were using virtual for the LCTC classes.
Guilty, sorry.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that you really meant that if these classes had to go remote, I, I just don't want there to be any confusion that there's, that the classes that you are specifically talking about are, I'm assuming, not going to be offered virtually, but you are talking about remote, if we have to go to Phase 1 to 3 in the state of Michigan, where we cannot go to the buildings, is, is where you're going with that?
That, that was where I was going, that you're correct. And I apologize, because I'm actually the one that, that bugs everybody else in the word police with, with those things. So I'm kind of embarrassed at this point, but thank you very much for clarifying that.
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you.
I do request this be on, on the voting meeting tonight.
Excellent. Okay, then let's move on to item B, which is approval of Life Church of La Bonia lease renewal.
I brought previously to the board our other leases for approval. This was the one that was, that was still outstanding. Their board, I think I had mentioned, Life Church's board was, was working through it, so we didn't have it in time, but, but now we, we do have the signed lease for you. Life Church has been at Holmes Middle School, they've actually been at Holmes, they moved into Riley because of the renovation at Holmes, and they, since last year, had moved back. Now, they have not been using the facility ever since the district shut down, and that continues, but they did want to sign back up. But they did want to sign back up for the 2020, 21 school year. So they, this is again, on the Sundays, just to do their service at homes like, like they've been doing. And it is a, an annual lease right now of $19,260. There is no rate increase from last year, and that is what happened with all of our, our leases that I brought to the board. So that is what we are bringing to your, to your attention for renewal.
Uh, Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mr. Francis, I think again, in light of our conversation earlier tonight. Can you and some potential new viewers talk a little bit about the difference between the building use, which we are not doing, and the long-term leases, which we are still honoring? The difference between those and why we've made some of those choices based on being able to keep a sanitary, the cleanliness in our buildings and limiting the number of people that are in our buildings?
Sure, sure. So the, the building use or facility use, it's commonly called as well, is when a group contacts the district and requests to use a classroom, the PAC, something like that for perhaps one-time or short-term use or rental. Those are currently suspended and under our current recommended plan that was discussed earlier, we don't intend to have facility use to, at least through the, the month of September. And then that would be ongoing based upon where the area is with, with COVID. Our long-term leases are our, our annual leases that we have. Some businesses that have control, or I shouldn't say control, that lease out the majority or large pieces of some buildings. And we do have the one church that only goes in on, on the Sundays and has their services. Now, in this instance, we are honoring these leases because we have a couple of child, a few different child cares, actually. And those are continuing to run. In fact, they're very important for the community and essential workers to be using. Two of our leases are items that are not being run. So we do have to get skills at Dickinson, which is not able to run because it's an athletic-based business. But we do still have a lease with them, but based upon the state's rules, they, they have not been using that facility. And we have Life Church of Livonia that's presented here this evening. Again, they are not using it. They have not been using the facility since March. This is simply a long-term lease in a relationship that we would like to continue and they would like to continue with us. So when it is appropriate and safe and we decide that it's allowable based upon state guidance and rules, then they can come back and pick up where they left off with their lease.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Mr. Francis, when that time comes and they will then use the, the facilities on Sundays. Are we going to require a cleaning protocol when they are done?
We do, we already, part of what a lease like this entails is custodial service, even though it's a Sunday. So they do pay part of what their fee in the lease is, is having custodial folks be there to open it, close it, clean afterwards. Now, in this environment, I foresee having additional need for sanitation of that area. You know, we could bring in our electrostatic sanitizer and, and hit the areas that they use. They don't use the entire building. They have very specific spaces that get used each time we know where they would be. And we could do our traditional cleaning protocol and follow it with a sanitization based upon when they come back and the status of COVID in, in our, in our city.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay.
I request this this evening as well, please.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Thank you.
Johnson, that concludes building.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. That will take us to item seven, our legislative committee, and I will turn it over to our chair, Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you, President Johnson. I don't believe we have anything tonight. Do we, Mrs. Oakquist?
We do not.
Okay, that concludes our committee of legislative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. Then that will take us to our last item eight, our personnel committee, and I'll turn it over to our chair, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you, President Johnson. We do not have anything for personnel, correct? Thank you.
Great. That then brings us to the end of our committee of the whole agenda. Again, I want to thank everybody for, for hanging in. We've got a little ways to go yet tonight. So this meeting is concluded. Do we want to take a few or do we want to jump right into our organizational meeting? I'm seeing, let's just keep going. Okay, sounds good. Okay, then I'll welcome everyone to our organizational meeting for July 27, 2020. Again, this is our virtual meeting. And as I said before, we certainly would like to meet personally. But in order to get as many people in attendance or who can view as possible. And we are under an executive order with regard to the number of people we can have in a room. This is the best way to get mass participation. So, and this is our organizational meeting, which really simply sets forth how we're going to organize ourselves for this year. So this meeting should go relatively quickly. So our item one is our roll call, and Mrs. Bonnefield, if you would do the honors.
Mrs. Bradford?
Here.
Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mr. Centers?
Yeah.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Johnson?
Here. We do have a quorum. Thank you all. That'll take us to item two, our audience communication. And I understand from Ms. Jenkins that we do have a number of audience communications tonight. So I'll turn it over to her to read.
Thank you, President Johnson. Yes, we do have 10 responses that were submitted, public comments that were submitted via our Google form, which were posted on our website. The forums were, forum was posted on our website 30 minutes before the meeting scheduled started this, this particular meeting. So I'll jump right in here and read those comments. The first is from Juana Johnson. And the comment is as follows. How, how is it that you can guarantee the safety of our children and, and the staff? How can you make sure everyone is maintaining the six-foot social distancing? Are there going to be temperature checks? Is it going to be required that children and staff be tested for COVID-19 prior to being able to return to school? Next comment is from Sharon Maxfield. If classrooms currently have 24 to 48-hour delay for reporting lice or strep throat, how will we ensure ample communication and timely responsiveness for COVID actions? Next is from Meredith Lilly. Is there going to be an option for kids to participate in extracurricular activities, but still do virtual classes to limit viral, virus exposure? And next comment from Rachel Duskowski. How will LPS compensate teachers or their families who contract COVID-19? For example, medical bills, time off from work, long, long-term care, funeral costs, et cetera. Next comment is from Rachel Muscat. Are you considering a live classroom environment in which teachers start Zoom? Or another application that the class is expected to be logged in by a specific time in which the students will have an opportunity to have their teacher deliver lessons as if they were at the school and interact with each other? They would, they could break for lunch and be given time to work on their assignments independently. It would provide safe interact, interactive learning environment that can address many issues, including parents having difficulty instructing their own children for various reasons, social interaction with their peers, a real-time opportunity to address questions about the lessons with the teacher as a structured day that most children need for an adequate learning experience. Thank you. Another from Rachel, does, does Rachel submitted a comment, two comments or three comments earlier. She submitted actually a few. So will LPS staff members be required to sign a waiver in order to return to not take legal action against LPS if they were to contract the virus at work? Another from the same person. How many cases are acceptable in LPS before transitioning to fully virtual learning for students? And another from the same person. The return to learn roadmap was written based on what is realistic in a school setting, not what is scientifically safest for students and staff? Or what other resources, for example, CDC, WHO, scientific studies, are LPS using to support the return to learn proposal? And looks like another one from the same person. Will staff be required to use their sick days for absences, absences that are related to COVID-19? And the final comment is from D, first initial D as in David, last name Luck. Individuals become infectious to others at least two days before they show symptoms. Some individuals never become symptomatic at all. By the, by the time an index case has been discovered, many branches of new exposures and infections may have sprouted throughout the city and beyond. If the LPS district becomes aware of an off-campus event that was attended by many students and someone from the event later tests positive or becomes ill, what will the protocol be for that? The Richmond School District just recently had multiple cases that stemmed from a summer sports, from, from summer sports practices, graduation parties, out-of-town group trips with multiple students grouped in vehicles and in hotels. And they're, they're delayed, oh, also their delayed prom that was held just last week. They are a rural district with many, with far fewer students and not all of the recent positive cases made the news reports. What does a much larger district such as LPS plan to do in response to such events, which are essentially outside of their control? And that's, that wraps up the, the comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins, and thank you to those who submitted comments tonight. We will now move on to item three, adoption of 2020, 2021 bylaws to establish meeting dates and other procedures. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached bylaws to establish 2020, 2021 meeting dates, procedures for the calling and posting of board meetings, and authorization to sign contracts and legal documents for the board.
Support.
I hear, heard multiple. Was it Mrs. Bradford in there?
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And Mrs. Oakquist will help us with this.
Thank you, President Johnson. Annually, in order to be in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, it is necessary for our board to adopt a meeting schedule for the forthcoming year. So you will see on your attachment, it's also available for our community on our board book under meeting agendas in the meeting packet. We, our board meetings are listed for this school year. As you know, the board only adopts the meeting schedule for the regular board meetings. However, we have already posted a listing, a draft listing of the meetings, which include all study sessions, committee of the whole meetings, board workshops, and regular meetings. However, this evening, what you are voting on this evening are the bylaws related to holding these meetings and the meeting dates themselves.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakquist. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to adopt the bylaws for the following year to establish meeting dates and other procedures. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes, President Johnson.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That now takes us to item four, designation of 2020, 2021 bank depositories. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution designating JP Morgan Chase Bank, Fifth Third Bank, and Michigan Liquid Asset Fund Plus as depositories for the school district during the 2020, 21 school year.
Support.
Is that Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Burton.
Mrs. Burton. Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Burton. And Mrs. Smith will help us with this. Good evening.
Thank you, President Johnson. By and large, I'm recommending we continue with the current banks that we work with. There's just one small change from last year. You won't see on the list, last year we had a Bank of, Bank of America account, and this year that account has been closed. We were by and large using our Bank of America account for our school activity accounts. We now run all of those activity accounts through the central office, business office, additional oversight. And so it made sense to transition those funds to our Chase account where we do our main banking. So for that reason, that account's no longer needed. Want to mention, we were completely satisfied. The Bank of America provided great, you know, customer service. It wasn't for that reason. It was simply that we no longer had a need for account, which is why there's a change for this year.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Burton for the designation of 2020, 2021 bank depositories. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to item five, appointment of investment officer. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the treasurer, Ms. Allison Smith, as the investment officer in conjunction with the district's investment policy for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Frank. And Mrs. Oakquist will handle this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Johnson. As the investment officer, the superintendent or designee, who in this case is Ms. Smith, our director of finance, will oversee the day-to-day management of the district's investment funds. She will be responsible for transferring the appropriate funds to affect investment transactions for the investment of operating funds. for the investment of operating funds, operating reserve funds, and bond proceeds consistent with the policy and actions of the Board of Education, including the district's investment policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the appointment of investment officer. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you, and might I say we're lucky to have Mrs. Smith in that position.
Absolutely.
Definitely.
That'll take us now to item six, appointment of staff member to be in charge of elections. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District acknowledge the appointment of Philip Francis as the staff member in charge of school elections for the 2020, 2021 school year. This appointment is ma- this appointment is made by the Board Secretary, Secretary with formal acknowledgement by the Board of Education.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And, uh, Mrs. Oakwest again.
Thank you, President Johnson. As you know, each year, uh, the, the Secretary of the Board of Education is asked to officially appoint a staff member who is responsible for overseeing and coordinating our elections. That has traditionally been the person serving in the role of overseeing operations in our district. There is regular coordination between the city clerk, um, from both Westland and Livonia, as well as each of our building supervisors and our operations supervisors as we set up for each of those elections. Um, so we are recommending, um, that Mr. Philip Francis, um, serve in that role, um, as he have, as he has for the past few years and continues to be, um, an excellent conduit, uh, between the city, um, and, uh, the leadership at each of our schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest. Uh, any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the appointment of staff member to be in charge of elections. Mrs. Bonnefield, please take the role.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. We're also lucky to have Mr. Francis in that role. Thank you.
Absolutely.
It's an honor just to be nominated.
Uh, that'll take us to item item seven, appointment of staff member to be responsible for posting board meeting notices.
President, sorry, President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District acknowledge the appointment of the superintendent as the administrator in charge of posting meeting notices. This appointment is made by the Board Secretary with formal acknowledgement by the Board of Education.
Support.
Bless you.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And Mrs. Oakwest.
Thank you, President Johnson. As you know, um, our bylaws not only establish meeting dates, but other procedures that designate the Secretary of the Board as the individual, um, responsible for causing notice to be given to the public with regard to our board meetings. Um, our secretary has been further advised, um, that, uh, the Secretary of the Board delegate this, um, to the administration, um, with the authority to handle the posting of meeting notices. Um, so that takes place out of, out of our office, um, and I do so in conjunction, um, with our outstanding Mrs. Wasniak, who serves as the executive assistant, um, to, uh, both me as the superintendent, as well as to our Board of Education.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest. Um, any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford, the department of staff member to be responsible for posting board meeting notices. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you. That, uh, brings us to the end of this agenda. Is there any other business to be brought before the organizational meeting? Seeing none, then the organizational meeting is adjourned. How are we all doing? Okay? Okay. With that, we'll go into our last meeting of the evening, our regular meeting for July 27th, uh, 2020. And this is our regular or voting meeting. Uh, as I indicated earlier at the other two meetings, we would prefer to do this in person. Uh, unfortunately, because of the executive order, we're limited to how many people we can have in, in a room, and we wanted to have as many people participate as possible, uh, with this meeting. So, uh, as you already saw, for those of you who may have already tuned in tonight, we had a significant discussion, uh, during our Committee of the Whole. All of the items that were brought up, uh, that will be voted on tonight were, were discussed at that meeting. So you may not hear as much discussion on these items tonight as you would because we already talked about them at length earlier this evening. Otherwise, uh, we're gonna start our meeting, and Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
I would love to take the role. Mrs. Bradford?
Here.
Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mr. Centers? Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Johnson?
Here. We do have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, Mrs. Jarvis, she has her flag. And I'm going to ask Mr. Uh, Centers to help us with our pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic, the one nation, under God, and the one God. Justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. That'll move us to item three, our communications. Uh, item A is written communications. I do not have any written communications. I don't see anyone, uh, with any of those tonight. So item B is our audience communications. Uh, this is limited in a regular meeting to 15 minutes. Uh, if they take longer than that, then we would pick up the remainder at the ender of our personnel, uh, section. And I understand from Mrs. Jenkins, we do have a few, uh, tonight that were submitted via, uh, the website. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Jenkins at this point to read those, uh, audience communications for us. Good evening, Mrs. Jenkins.
Good evening, President Johnson. Uh, we have four, 11 responses, uh, public comments that were submitted via our website link, just prior to the, this, uh, the scheduled start of this particular meeting. So I will go through and let me get myself here to the first comment. The first comment was, uh, submitted by Bridget Casey. And she writes, "Good evening. My concern today revolves around the lack of communication and pre- and preparation for the, for the start of the school year for Niji Yuro. This is my personal opinion, but is shared by other parents." Every other school in the district will have over 30 days from you finalizing and approving the, a plan. Niji Yuro is receiving, if an email goes out tomorrow, 16 days to prepare, and if any later, less than two weeks. This is unacceptable. If the disregard and disrespect toward the parents and the students, and quite possibly the staff, is astounding. To not even let us know, to not even let us know if we will have in-school learning, the governor pending, uh, changes, or not, it will be, or if it will be all remote, or even the first few weeks we are in school ahead of the rest, shows how you think of the families at the school. Two weeks is not enough time to make solid plans for all families. And the fact that the other schools will have 35 days from the August 3rd decision is extremely unfair and unthoughtful. If you have a special or a different school, it is up to you to make sure you accommodate all of your families in all schools equally. If a slightly different plan needs to be made in, in a more timely manner, so be it. This is not and has not been the case with many issues that you're, Niji Yuro. Because of this lack of preparation on the district's part, our personal lives are being affected harder, and I am personally losing out on some opportunities because I will not know what is going to happen with my son's school. I realize that it is much too late for any sort of initiative to be shown. Treat all schools equally, treat all schools fairly, treat Niji Yuro as if it weren't, it weren't the stepchild of Livonia schools. We are part of the family and, and are always left behind. The next comment was submitted by Claire Sheldon. "The plan you have presented does not address Niji Yuro, which starts two weeks before the normal district start, start date. Is Niji Yuro starting half-days on August 13th, which is the first day of school? In addition, this is a language immersion elementary school. Wearing face masks, wearing face masks while trying to speak and learn another language is not realistic. The state does not mandate, mandate face coverings for elementary students, and LPS has a more strict requirement. Um, and this should change as wearing a face mask for younger children is very difficult." Next comment from, uh, Justin Romer. "I think asking elementary kids to wear a mask all day is, is asking a lot. How are the teachers expected to teach and police the mask-wearing while in the classroom? The children will be robbed of valuable learning time while the teachers spend 50% of their time making sure the kids have their masks on properly." Next comment from, uh, first initial D., last name Luck. "We are finding out more about this virus all the time, including how long viral particles can stay aloft in a room. If we are allowing individuals to remove their masks when they are alone in a classroom, and obviously during mealtimes, we are going to upgrade, are we going to upgrade the HVAC systems to circulate the air more frequently and filter and treat and return the air to minimize how many viable viral particles are put back into the room? Most of our LPS buildings do not have air conditioning to provide a comfortable temperature during the, during the weeks at the beginning and the end of the school year. If there is a power outage or other mechanical fi- failure in the school building that causes the HVAC system to be inoperable, and the weather conditions at the time do not allow for everyone to move outdoors while they are waiting for parents or buses to pick them up, how will we make sure that everyone is safe, safely spaced apart while they wait?" The next comment was submitted by Leah Sheppard Dennis. "How much decision power is afforded to each individual school regarding online curriculum? Are schools provided any autonomy in curriculum planning or, or, or obligated to defer to the district? Niji, Niji Yuro, curriculum is more advanced in some, some subjects than the LPS curriculum and the Michigan standards. Additionally, Niji has multiple layers of Japanese curricula. How much autonomy will Niji administration, staff, and parents have in the education of their children, noting potentially significant cultural differences and comfort levels with in-person learning? This return to learn presentation doesn't answer any questions about virtual learning, which is an area of interest for many Niji families for many reasons." The next comment was submitted by Mrs. Addison. "What happens when a student or a teacher has, uh, I'm sorry, what, what happens when a student or, or a teacher has been exposed? How will students receive instruction while quarantined at home, or what is the plan?" Next comment, uh, was submitted by, they just give a first name of Erica. "Will face, face coverings be required during outside recess?" Next comment is from Leslie Mason. "Will there be a specific face mask requirement we need to meet as parents when purchasing or sewing masks for our children? When students are outside for recess, PE, music, et cetera, will they be required to wear a mask?" Um, another comment from Erica regarding lunch. Our kindergarten, our kindergarten students considered youngest learners, and that was pulled from the, uh, presentation, the youngest learners, um, eating lunch in the cafeteria. The next comment was submitted by, first name, uh, was given as Kelly. "Thank you for the work you've put into the planning. Class sizes were physically before COVID." Um, there's some missing words. "How are we going to institute social distancing if the majority of the students, uh, return, choose to and return to in-person learning? Additionally, most schools do not seem to have extra rooms to host extra classes to keep the class sizes down. Will there be additional teachers, staff, in additional classrooms?" And the final comment was submitted by Claire Sheldon. "The Safe Start September program is one of the most inconsiderate aspects of the program the district is rolling out. For those of us who are working parents, this is extremely difficult to manage. We do not have, we not only have to get our children to school in the morning, then pick them up after a short time, but then have to manage their virtual instruction from home in the afternoon. This seems like an easy out for the district where the burden is put on the parents again, just as it was at the end of last school year." And that concludes the public comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins, and thank you to all that took the time to, uh, fill out one of the forms and present your, your thoughts this evening. That'll take us to item C, response to prior audience communication. Uh, I do not have any, are there any response to prior audience communication? I am seeing none, so that'll take us to item D, our much awaited district update from our superintendent, Mrs. Oakwest.
Thank you, President Johnson. I have purposely kept it, uh, very, very brief, uh, this, this month. Um, as you know, I enjoy very much sharing, um, the happenings across our district, and really, our focus, um, has been primarily on, um, work within our LPS Return to Learn Task Force and Steering Committee. Um, we have also been, um, monitoring closely, um, any of our summer programs that have been going on. Mr. Green and I had an opportunity to visit Jackson Center. Um, as you know, we have, um, some of our, our childcare classrooms open there, and things have been going very well throughout, uh, the summer as that program has been underway. Um, we also have, as Mr. Willenborg shared, um, a number of our, um, athletic teams and marching band groups that have begun, um, their preseason conditioning under very stringent protocols. And I'd like to share my thanks and appreciation, um, to our athletic directors, our marching band directors, um, and all of our coaches and staff who have been part of, um, really getting tho- those programs up and running, and again, in a very, um, different environment. Um, they've done so successfully, and we've had, um, students and staff participating, um, in that for Um, they've done so successfully and we've had, um, students and staff participating, um, in that for the past several weeks. So I just wanted to, um, give a shout out and an acknowledgement to all of their efforts, um, in a really unique environment, um, to begin those programs once again. Um, so our focus over this next week will be, um, listening and responding, um, to many questions related to our return to learn plan. Uh, we look forward to continuing to have that opportunity, um, to hear from our community, our parents and our staff, um, as well as, um, continue to put out informational items, um, in response to many of the questions that have been, been shared, um, here this evening. So we, um, we know we have a tremendous, um, school community. Um, and we are in a situation where I believe each and every one of us are sincerely working, um, to, uh, really follow the guidance provided to us, um, by the governor's task force and the roadmap, um, as well as things like our CDC guidelines, the recommendations from our, um, the American Pediatric Association. Um, and really all of the research that has been done, um, by our groups. And so we'll continue, um, to work hard on this, um, to make, uh, changes and modifications, um, where appropriate. Um, and continue to bring that information forward to not only you, our Board of Education, but also to our community, um, as we move forward over the next several days and weeks.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Oakquist.
You're welcome.
The update. That will then take us to item four, our consent agenda, and may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approved the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. Five A minutes of the public hearing of June fifteenth, two thousand twenty. Five B minutes of the regular meeting of June fifteenth, two thousand twenty.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion, uh, by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford to accept the consent agenda. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis? Mrs. Jarvis?
Yeah, I'm muted, Mrs. Jarvis. She's muted.
Yeah. Gotta make it official, sister.
I think she's frozen. Yes!
Yay! Uh, Mr. S- Mr. Centers? Uh, Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes.
All right.
The motion carries, thank you. That takes us now to item six A, we depo- disposed of five A and B through the consent agenda. So item six A is appointment of high school principal, and may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
We can hear you, Mrs. Jarvis, thank you.
Um, move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Kristen Casada as an assistant principal at Churchill High School, beginning August tenth, twel- two thousand twenty.
Support.
Was that Mrs. Frank? We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. And Mrs. Oakquist, are you going to handle this or is Mr. Willenborg, I guess?
I was, I was gonna start anyhow, uh.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, President Johnson, uh. I'd like to extend a warm welcome and introduce Ms. Kristen Casada, who we, we are recommending, um, as the new Livonia Public, to the Livonia Public Schools, as new assistant principal at Churchill High School. Her personal educational journey includes a bachelor's degree and her teaching certificate in journalism and English language arts from Eastern Michigan University. She was also awarded a master's degree from EMU in education administration and leadership. Ms. Casada was a classroom teacher of ELA drama and communication for seventeen years in the Plymouth Canton Community Schools. She's operated her own dance studio business and has served for seven years as the director of the, of the Park Players Theater Company, the theater company of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Most recently, Ms. Casada has served as the assistant principal at Taylor High School. As you'll soon learn, uh, Ms. Casada brings great energy and enthusiasm to her life's work. She is a self-described multitasker, uh, who will be a hundred percent committed to the success of students at her new school. She'll hit the ground running, uh, she brings a positive attitude and a proactive problem-solving, uh, persona. Our interview committee share their confidence that she will be an outstanding leader within the Charger Nation and in the Livonia Public Schools. Ms. Oakquist?
Thank you so much, Mr. Willenborg, and thank you for that, uh, great description of Ms. Casada. And I would like to, um, thank each and every applicant for this position. We had a tremendous response, um, for this, um, this role. Um, we were very pleased, um, and enjoyed very much having the opportunity, um, to go through a three-round process, um, interview a number of qualified candidates. Um, we are grateful for, um, not only the interest, but the willingness for each and every one of those individuals, um, to come forward, um, with their interest in, in this role in Livonia Public Schools. And I'd like to thank each and every member of our administrative team for being part of this process. Um, you have certainly aptly described, uh, Ms. Casada, and we are eager to get her skills, um, her energy and her, and her enthusiasm over, um, to Charger Nation. Um, we believe she will be, um, a tremendous addition to our fine administrative team there and as part of the Churchill community overall. Um, we are so pleased, um, to make this recommendation to you this evening, um, and could not bring this, uh, with, uh, more enthusiasm or excitement, um, to the board this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakquist. Any questions or comments at this time from the board? Mrs. Burton?
Uh, yes, it, it, just reading over your resume and your background, I was particularly excited, and I'm sure others had noticed the same thing, that you seem to have such a unique, wonderful fit for Churchill High School with having such a strong background in the creative, creative and performing arts in, in addition to, uh, your, your experience in education on the whole. So we're just really excited to have you join the Churchill team and Livonia community, uh, or Livonia Public Schools community, so welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any other, uh, questions or comments at this time from the board? If not, then we will go ahead and take the vote. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the appointment of high school assistant principal. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
We do, let's make it official. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Casada.
Thank you, thank you so much, everybody. I am so excited. I've been on since six, listening to everyone and getting, getting to know everybody. This is really great. Um, I just want, I just want to take a quick second, I know it's late, um, but I want to just thank Livonia Public Schools for having the faith in me to become one of your newest leaders and join the administrative team at Churchill High School. They've already been so welcoming and I've spoken with all of the administrators there. And, um, I'm just sincerely grateful to Superintendent Oakquist and you, the Board of Education, uh, Dan Willenborg, Keith McDonald, Kevin Eto'o, and the entire interview committee. Um, I know it was an arduous task considering all of the candidates who applied for this position. And I'm just very, very appreciative, um, to be given this opportunity. I really, really am. I have a lot of family members who have gone through Livonia Public Schools and a lot of friends, and I grew up in this area. So I'm very familiar with our community and, um, I plan on staying here for a very long time. And I know this, this time of year is, um, very scary for a lot of families. And as Dan said, I am a hundred percent committed to doing everything I possibly can, um, for the students and parents and staff in this district, um, make them feel comfortable with everything that's happening in our world. Um, and I'm just very, very proud to say that I am now an administrator with Livonia Public Schools. So thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I'm very excited to get started.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from my colleagues? You're, you're. You, you're gonna love Churchill.
I already do. It's gonna be great, I'm excited.
As Mrs. Burton said, with your qualifications, you're a perfect fit for there, so congratulations, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, same.
All right, that'll take us to item six B, appointment of high school assistant principal. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Lindsay Rousseau as an assistant principal at Stevenson High School, beginning August tenth, two thousand twenty.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers and, uh, Mr. Willenborg, I guess we'll start us off with this one as well.
Thank you again, President Johnson. Uh, also surviving, uh, candidate pool of a hundred and thirty-eight candidates and, uh, as, uh, Ms. Oakquist mentioned, uh, rigorous, uh, three rounds of interviews, would like to extend a warm welcome, uh, to Ms. Lindsay Rousseau, who we are recommending to join the Livonia Public Schools as a new assistant principal at Stevenson High School. Ms. Rousseau earned her bachelor's degree with an English major from Central Michigan University and has also been awarded a master's degree in curriculum and instruction and a second master's degree in K through twelve education administration. Ms. Rousseau has worked exclusively within the Wayne Westland Community School, this schools district, where she served as an ELA classroom teacher for eight years and as a high school assistant principal for seven years. She offers extensive supervisory experience in all student events and activities. Most recently, Ms. Rousseau held the position of Director of Human Resources within the Wayne, Wayne Westland Community Schools. Ms. Rose is a, is a collaborative leader and a natural team builder. She is anxious to get back into the school hallways to engage students and create positive connections with school staff. I know she'll hit the ground running, she offers and brings a strong voice of reason, uh, to our work, she's a leader of learning. Our interview committee share their confidence that she will be an impact player and an outstanding leader at Stevenson High School and within the Livonia Public Schools. I'll turn it over to Ms. Oakquist.
Thank you so much, Mr. Willenborg. We are, um, equally thrilled to bring forward this recommendation to you. We feel, um, just very, very fortunate, um, to have, uh, two candidates of, of this caliber. And certainly, Mrs. Rousseau's background, as shared with you by Mr. Willenborg, we believe will be an exceptional, um, fit at Stevenson High School. Um, her combination of, of mind and heart and talent and commitment certainly came through, not only in the interviews, but in each and every person we spoke with, um, that worked with her. Um, they could not speak more highly of her integrity, um, her commitment to the students, the staff and the community she serves. Um, and we are very eager, um, to get her on board with our administrative leadership team in Livonia Public Schools. We also want to thank her, I think this might be a record, um, for an appointment at ten thirty PM. We've certainly had meetings go this late, but I don't know that we've ever had an administrative appointment go this late. So we thank both, um, Ms. Casada and Mrs. Rousseau, um, for sticking in with us this evening. Um, and we are very, very proud to bring this recommendation forward to you this evening and look forward to having her become a Spartan for life.
And you should know about that, Mrs. Oakquist. Thank you, Mrs. Oakquist and Mr. Willenborg. Uh, at this point, are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll, uh, Mrs. Burton?
Just jumped, jumped in, we, we can't let these go by without, without welcoming our folks, uh, on. And some of us just can't keep our, our, our thoughts to ourselves sometimes. But a- again, looking at, looking at your resume, I was very impressed with the depth of your knowledge, uh, and the, the depth of your experience through Wayne Westland. Uh, looks like their loss is, is definitely our gain. But, uh, but I'm thrilled to have, uh, have you come on board to Stevenson with this many years of experience and, and not only in various roles, but deeply in those roles. So we're very excited to have you come on board and, uh, we hear wonderful things about you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any other questions or comments? I, I too was very impressed with your, your resume. You have a lot of experience, uh, in, in the areas that, that we need, so, uh, we appreciate that. So we'll move, uh, then right to the vote. Uh, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers for the appointment of high school assistant principal. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you. Um, just, I just will take thirty seconds, I promise.
Take as much as you want.
Um, I've been hanging in there with you guys since six o'clock too, so, um, I know it's been a long evening, but great work. I'm so, so thankful for the teams and the committees that have put all of the work into the return to learn plan. I, the hours are crazy that go into stuff like that, so I really appreciate the work. Um, and thank you to members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Oakquist, and members of the Executive Cabinet for this amazing opportunity to become a part of the Stevenson administrative team and to get back into a building, um, which is where my passion lies in working with kids. Um, I'm so happy, excited, elated to be joining, um, the LPS family and so excited to work with Stevenson staff, students and that community. These are definitely unprecedented times, um, but I'm definitely ready to hit the ground running, jump in, um, make sure that things are safe for our kids, but that they're also getting that well-rounded, high-quality education that LPS is known for, hands down. So, thank you again, can't wait to get started. Um, yeah, and thanks for making me a Spartan, I'm excited.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations, Lindsay.
So much, thank you.
And, and since you, you've been waiting since six o'clock, uh, you would not hurt our feelings if you chose to leave the meeting and, uh, you know, did whatever you need to do this late at night. Uh, and that goes for Ms. Casada as well.
All right, if you don't, we might question your judgment.
Again, thank you and welcome aboard to both of you.
Thank you, lady.
Congratulations.
Okay, that will take us to item six C, leaves of absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and improve the request for a leave of absence as listed below. Emily Matani, August thirty-one, two thousand twenty. Karen Schmidt, August thirty-one, two thousand twenty. Janelle Thorne, August thirty-one, two thousand twenty.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Burton. Uh, and is Mr. Willenborg gonna, or Mrs., uh, Dr. Terrell?
Thank you, President Johnson. Mr. McDonald has his, has entrusted me with his notes. So you have before you the names of three employees requesting a leave for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. This request is in accordance with the collective bargaining agreements for each employee's bargaining unit. I ask that you consider approval of said requests.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Burton, to accept the leaves of absence. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, thank you very much. That takes us to item six D, recall of a teacher. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank? Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and recall to the district employee as a teacher and recall to the district employment as a teacher for 2020-21 school year, the person listed on the attached document dated July 27, 2020.
Support.
Who was the, Mrs. Bradford?
Mrs. Bradford.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And Dr. Terrell, are you gonna handle this one as well?
Yes, President Johnson. Following Board Authorization on June 15, 2020, the recall procedure process was initiated. The attached document contains the name of one teacher who has been recalled. This position is within the 2020-2021 budget guidelines. Currently, one K-12 teacher and one shared time teacher remain on layoff. In addition, there is one counselor who has had a reduction in hours to the extent she remains on layoff status.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the recall of a teacher. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to item 6E, Resignations. This does not need a motion, it's just for our information. So, I will move to item 6F, Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by James Britton, Linda Keimig, Ruth Martin, Gloria McCormick, Peter Minstraw, Minister Straly, Christian Nichols, David Robinson, Maine Senkbyel and Corinne Witchman.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And again, Dr. Terrell.
Thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, we bring before you nine employees who will be retiring. As these employees leave the Livonia Public Schools, they take with them a combined total of 222 years of experience. On behalf of the administration, I would like to thank these employees for their dedicated years of service that they have provided the students of Livonia Public Schools. And I ask that the Board adopts the attached resolutions of appreciation for these retirees.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Questions or comments from the board?
Thank you for your service.
Congratulations, we wish them all well, a number of them with over 30 years' service and one with over 40 years' service in Livonia Public Schools. We are grateful for all that they have given to our school district.
Wow, that's just amazing, just amazing.
It absolutely is.
Okay, any other comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to accept the resolutions of appreciation for employees who are retiring. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
I will, it's getting late, I'm getting my S's and my M's mixed up. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Again, congratulations and good luck on the next chapter. That will take us now to item 7, Our Instruction Matters. And item A, Approval to Purchase StudySync Textbooks and Online Licenses for ELA Grades 11 and 12. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of StudySync as the digital textbook and curriculum resource for 11th and 12th grade English Language Arts at a total cost of $229,446, which includes shipping and handling. This purchase includes $16,255.71 in free teacher materials.
Support.
Was that Mrs. Frank?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval to purchase textbooks for English Language Arts grades 11 and 12. And hi, Mrs. O'Brien.
Hi, President Johnson. I am happy again to bring to your voting the purchase of StudySync textbook for our 11th and 12th grade ELA classrooms. This textbook has been vetted by our textbook adoption process. We had 10 high school teachers at all three of our high schools work for over a year on updating their curriculum and reviewed six different programs, piloted StudySync and one other program, and are recommending the purchase of StudySync. It's been approved by their administrators and it includes textbooks and digital licenses for students to access online. This purchase would be coming out of our secondary textbook budget, which has been enhanced by the Wayne County Enhancement Village monies.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Any questions or comments from the board? No, okay, Mrs. Burton?
Yes, just as Mrs. O'Brien mentioned, these are the kinds of purchases that we can make with Wayne County Enhancement Village that literally could not happen otherwise. This is just vital money that has been put to great use in our school district. And we just really want to thank the voters, the community members in all of Wayne County for approving this for not only Livonia Public Schools students, but those students in all of Wayne County.
Thank you for recognizing that, Mrs. Burton. Mrs. Bonnefield, did you have a question?
I just wanted to call out that we listened to a much more extensive presentation earlier tonight. And for the, I guess for the next several items, we're probably gonna not have a ton of questions because we've already gone through this at an earlier committee of the whole meeting. So, it's not that these are not getting the appropriate attention that they all deserve, but that if anybody's still on the call with us, they know that we talked about them earlier tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval to purchase textbooks for English Language Arts grades 11 and 12. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes, the motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
That now takes us to item 8, Business Matters. And item A is Approval to Purchase Musical Instruments. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of musical instruments as awarded to Cameron Music for $20,275, to Taylor Music for $83,840.85, and to Hewitt Music for $56,087, for a total expenditure of $160,202.85.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And I will call on Mr. Willenborg to help us with this. You're muted.
Thank you.
I know your wife prefers to mute you, but we want to hear you.
Thanks. As we discussed at our committee meeting earlier this evening, a significant portion of the remaining funds in the 2013 bond monies has been allocated to complete the purchase of musical instruments at the secondary level. Now, so we went through a normal routine process of getting inventory and an assessment of needs collected. And we put out a request for proposal. That bid process resulted in four vendors providing us with partial bids. So, in the evaluation of those bids through Ms. Herring, our teacher music leader, Harry Law and myself, we came up with those allotments to Cameron Music, Taylor Music and Hewitt Music. It's based primarily on, you know, include several factors, including of course, low bid, but service on the order, the reliability of the vendor and the local relationships that we share. So, I request your support for this purchase for musical instruments at the secondary level.
Thank you, Mr. Willenborg. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, then we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to approve the purchase of musical instruments. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
I'm on mute. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
You didn't get my miming? Mrs. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Oh, Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield? Says yes. You guys, it's so late. Mr. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, on behalf of our music teachers and our music community.
Thank you, Mr. Willenborg. That takes us to item 8B, Approval to Purchase Laptop Computers and Carts. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of laptop computers and charging carts from CDWG Vernon Hills, Illinois, in the amount of $694,310.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And we'll turn to the ever-popular Mr. Francis.
Thank you, President Johnson. This purchase, as discussed earlier this evening, is for 850 laptops along with 23 charging carts. These laptops are for student use at the secondary level, both middle school and high school, in some of our specialty classes that require very specific software for the course curriculum. CDWG has gone through the REMC bid process, which is where this pricing came from, which does satisfy the Board's requirements to bid. And we recommend the Board approve this purchase. We have been told by the vendor, there's a six to eight week lead time. So, we realize that that puts us slightly into the school year's beginning. But based upon recent understandings of supply chain concerns, that's a pretty good number as far as receiving the product.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
And this is, I apologize, this is just to clarify also, from the 2013 bond fund.
Right. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the approval of laptop computers and cart purchase via the 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Francis.
Thank you.
That now takes us to item 8C, Approval of Life Church of Livonia Lease Renewal. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the lease agreement with Life Church of Livonia, effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, for an annual total amount of $19,260.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Burton. And again, we'll turn to Mr. Francis.
Thank you, sir. This is, as mentioned, a lease renewal. Life Church has been with Livonia Schools for several years, using currently Holmes Middle School, portion, I should say, of Holmes Middle School. They currently are not holding their services due to COVID, but they are still interested and we are still interested in having them. So, this is a lease renewal for the 2021 school year. And the funds generally will be providing additional revenue for Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the approval of Life Church of Livonia Lease Renewal. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Francis.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, that takes us to item 9, Hearing from Board Members. And our item A is the first reading of Board Policies. Mrs. Oakwist, do you want to start us on this and just run through these?
You're muted, Andrea.
Yes, I will, President Johnson, thank you.
No, we can hear you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I lost the screen, there we go, alrighty, we're back. We are going to go through and actually, Dr. Terrell is going to review these board policies. But GAA, GAB, GAEA, GAEAA, JAA and JCED are in a group of policies that we've recently reviewed based on two updates, legal updates. So, as you know, Mrs. Burton is our policy chair. We have continuously gone through our policies over the course of a number of years and we have routinely updated those, both as part of our regular procedure, but also as necessitated by any legal changes. So, one, based on a Supreme Court ruling, as well as updated information on Title IX legislation. We were required to update elements of our policies regarding our non-discrimination clause, discriminatory harassment of students or employees, and equal educational opportunities. And so, I will ask Dr. Terrell to please give the general information for each of these policies that we have updated. And then I believe we also have one additional policy beyond that.
Thank you, Superintendent. So, we have six policies related to non-discrimination for personnel and students. They have been updated to include the new Title VII Supreme Court decision, as Superintendent Oakwist said, which sex in the definition has now been interpreted to include sexual orientation, sexual identity or transgender status, as well as Title IX updates that include an updated definition of sexual harassment, as well as updated grievance procedure. So, each policy stated previously has been updated to reflect both Title VII and Title IX language based on legal guidance. I would be happy to go over any individual policy language changes. I would be happy to go over any individual policy language changes if needed.
The board have any requests for that? Doesn't look like, uh, Mrs. Burton.
Uh, the only, uh, this is not a content, but as we mentioned in the meeting earlier this evening, just the title on JCED needs the word personnel changed to the word student. We discussed that in the, in the meeting a couple of hours ago, but just wanted to put it on the record for tonight also.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Anyone else have any questions or, or need any clarification? Doesn't look like it. We have gone through these. They are, as Dr. Terrell said, in accordance with the new Supreme Court ruling. One question that I have, are we going to be voting on this as a block, or when we do the second reading, are we going to do them individually? Mrs. Oakwist?
What we've done in policies that have a similar nature is, um, we would vote on those as one block. However, um, at any given time, a board member could request that one of those items be reviewed separately as part of the discussion of that motion, but that would be how we would tend to move forward next, at the next regular meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. Does anybody have a problem with proceeding in that fashion? Okay, is everybody good with putting this on for the second reading at our next regular meeting?
Yes, please.
Everybody's good with that? Okay. We'll have that on then for the next regular meeting as the second reading. That will now take us to item 9B, temporary suspension of board policies that improve, impede safe environment during COVID-19 pandemic. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Moved at the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District, temporarily suspend, to the extent allowed under law, any board of education policy as identified by the district's administration as impeding the schools, the school district's ability to provide the safety and welfare of students, staff members, and visitors during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Burton, do you want to just expound a little on that for whoever may be listening now that wasn't listening at the committee of the whole?
I would be happy to. We have approximately 600 pages of policy, and it dawned on us over the last few months during this pandemic that there may be a few things peppered throughout that we may, in, in order to provide the safest environment for our students and our staff, we may need to alter a policy here or there. We checked with the Michigan Association of School Boards, and our legal counsel there, Brad Bonansek, had advised us that rather than going through every policy in our book and making changes and then flipping them back, hopefully soon when this pandemic is over, uh, we can simply pass this motion tonight that recognizes that if a policy or a portion thereof needs to be set aside for the purpose of safety during COVID-19, we can do so through this motion and have that taken care of.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any questions or comments from the board?
No.
Seeing none, I, I just want to thank you, Mrs. Burton, for the initiative you took in looking into this, um, particular issue, knowing that you are the policy guru, and knew that there, there may be a number of policies that were perhaps impacted by the pandemic, and how to, without, uh, it's, you know, using so much energy to deal with each policy, that we were able to get one policy to cover the whole, uh, the whole thing. So thank you for, for doing that for us.
You are welcome. I was oh-so-happy when we got this answer.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the temporary suspension of board policies that impede a safe environment during COVID-19 pandemic. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, thank you. That motion carries. That takes us now to hearing from board members, item C, and this is a time that we have agreed that we would set aside for board members to make comments, anything they want to talk about tonight. So I'll, I'll open it up to anyone who would like to say a few things. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Johnson. It's been a long night, and we've had a lot of very critical discussions tonight. I would like to encourage the community to keep asking questions. We don't necessarily have all the answers, but if we don't know what all your questions are, then guaranteed you're not going to get an answer. We also encourage the community members to attend any kind of forums or questions and answer sessions that we have, anything that, that we can do to help us all pull through this together. It's not going to be easy. It's not going to be perfect, and some of the things, we won't know until we're in the middle of them. So please, let's extend a little bit of grace to each other and support each other so we can all arrive intact on the other side.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Anyone else like to say a few words? Seeing none, I, I just want to thank those, as Mrs. Jarvis said, this has been a long night. I want to thank my, my colleagues for hanging in there, asking very good questions. Thank you to Cabinet for all you've done. I wish we had a magic wand that we could just wave and everything would be right, and we just don't have that magic wand. But what we have is hundreds of people working hard to try and come up with the best solution. And I think Mrs. Jarvis used the word earlier, compromise. In at least the subcommittee that I worked on, there was a lot of compromise. There were a lot of different ideas, and I think that's the way you get things done is compromise. Unfortunately, that's become somewhat of a dirty word, but that's how we get things done. We do it at Cabinet, we do it on this board, and I'm confident that we are going to do the best things that we can for all of our students and staff, and the parents in the community. So again, thank you for everyone hanging in tonight, and if there is nothing else that to be brought before the board in terms of business tonight, then we are adjourned. Thank you, and good evening.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Thank you, everyone.
It's only 11.